I got it. Call the meeting in order. Jeff, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Peitzel.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood. Okay, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exter.
No.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here. First, I'll just do a kind of a quick review of tonight's agenda. Here at the work session, we're going to do a quick COVID-19 response update. Staff has put together a small business emergency assistance grant program that they'll be presenting to us at our work session here tonight, and then we'll be getting a transit RSP update. And as we get into our council meeting tonight, it's a pretty busy meeting as all of us are aware. We'll have under presentations, we have two officers getting sworn in. Chief Roberts will be swearing in here tonight. Do we have any questions on our consent agenda on either the minutes or the Sandy Arts Commissioner appointment?
Ooh.
Okay. Under new business, we have our Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. Is there any questions on how that will logistically work this evening?
No decisions tonight, right?
Correct. Well, it looks like what we'll be looking to do is keep the public comment portion open for another week. That'd be closing the, we'll be closing, I don't have the proper language in front of me, but we'll be closing our hearing but keeping the public comment portion. Getting a lot of background noise from somebody, somebody has like running water or a sink or even going in the background. Sandy will then be getting, going through a legislative order on a proposed code change to our parking standards. We'll then be discussing our Sandy Police Association collective bargaining agreement, as well as a withdrawal of our hold harmless agreement that we voted on at our last meeting for 38888 Pioneer Boulevard. We'll then go on to reports from city manager and then our committee and council reports. So are any questions about tonight's agenda?
Mayor, I had to step out for a second. I apologize. Do you have all the necessary paperwork for the swearing in? I just, I'm sure you do, but just want to make sure.
I do, but my understanding is, is that you're going to be swearing in the officers tonight. Is that correct?
I wasn't going to. That was going to be you. I was hoping you could do that. I'm sorry for the, I mean, I don't have it sit in front of me because I thought.
I could do it.
Okay, perfect.
I think either way, it's going to be a little unorthodox.
It will be. It's, it's going to be a little different. I feel, I also, I feel sorry for the guys. It's usually a time, but we've got to get it done. So we'll plan something later for them and they're happy to be here. So good. Thank you.
Great. Sounds good. All right. With that, we'll go into our COVID-19 response update. Gordon, do you want to kick us off with that?
Yeah. So again, thanks. I would say, thanks for being brave, for holding this meeting in this manner. I think we're actually pioneering a massive public hearing in this method. And I just want to applaud staffer and the council for coming up with the solution and be able to do this meeting, you know, given the circumstances and doing it a way that we can get public participation. So we were anticipating a lot of participants and attendees, so we'll see how the system holds. And fortunately, we had that trial run a couple of weeks ago and that went pretty well. So what did we want to do tonight was just give a brief update on the city's COVID-19 response. We held the bigger sort of round table at the department heads a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to have another opportunity for the council to ask any questions. And we do have staff available to answer questions. So we're, you know, as you know, we're kind of in this holding pattern now since March 23rd where we've been ordered to stay home and save lives. And so our city facilities are still closed to the public. We anticipate the closure to go on for, I would, if I was a betting man, I would bet another couple of months. The state of Washington just closed schools through the end of the school year. And if past practice is any indication, we'll probably see something similar here in Oregon. If you're looking at sort of the modeling and predictions on how Oregon will be hit with this, we're looking at probably peaking in early May for our COVID. If you hear kids in the background, my apologies, that's one of the natures of this thing. But we anticipate probably peaking in early May, which will mean, I assume that schools will be closed and also our city facilities will also be closed. And right now, we're kind of advertising that the library and the community center will be closed until the end of the month here in April. But we're sort of talking about close until further notice, which again will likely be for the next couple of months. What that means also operationally is, you know, events such as our SOLVE cleanup and the Earth Day events have been canceled. We're looking at our summer events and, you know, trying to balance between holding those dates, like the longest day parkway and our, you know, summer concerts. You know, there's also, you know, big community events like Mountain Festival, of course, and the fireworks that, you know, we have those dates reserved. And, you know, if for some reason we get lucky and this thing, you know, passes through and we're able to have those events, we could still do that. But we're anticipating that it's likely not going to happen at this point. For department updates, again, thanks to the chief for staying plugged into the county's EOC and continuing to get updates on what's going on at the county. He did receive a shipment of PPE this past week, which he was able to distribute to departments. And that was really helpful for transit and for SandyNet and for community services. And one thing that we wanted to talk to you in particular about is regarding the library and what to do in the, you know, in this event that we now have a couple of months of closure and a lot of people seeking sort of any kind of services they can get, right? During, you know, we're all stuck at home with our, you know, limited, maybe, you know, access to services like eBooks and things like that. What about having some sort of, you know, curbside service on a limited basis at the library? And, you know, we were kind of seeking what the council's input might be on, you know, having a program that people can, you know, drive up or come by and pick up holds and, you know, return their items, but obviously maintaining, you know, social distancing and, you know, taking those extra precautions. I think, Sarah, are you?
Yes.
Great. Did you want to elaborate on that?
Sure. So the way we would likely do it, if we, if you decide we should go ahead with it, is that the county would open holds on Sandy items for pickup at Sandy only. The patron would call the library to reserve a time to pick up their holds. We would probably do it for three or four hours a day. Staff will schedule them. We would set up a table outside. So, and then when the person arrives during their scheduled time period, they would call the library again. We would take the books, which would already be checked out to them, set them on the table, walk back into the library, and then the patron could go and grab the books from the table. We did get masks from the chief, and I don't know when the eyewear will be in, but we could possibly have eyewear depending on when we started this. So I just really wanted to get some direction on whether you think this is a good idea, and if it is, when we should start it? Should we start it at the end of this week? Should we start it at the, after the peak in Oregon of the COVID-19? What are your thoughts?
My first question, I guess, is, is there a model? Are there any other library services that are investigating this path and talking about doing this?
There are a number of libraries in Oregon that have been doing it. I don't know if they still are, but Roseburg, Crestwell, Klamath County, Crip County, Skepphus Public Library, Jefferson County. So a number of libraries in Oregon have been doing curbside service. And it's basically this same model that they've kind of honed into being the safest delivery.
But it does sound like we would, and I'm not opposed. It does sound like we'd be the first in kind of the Portland metro area, though.
Yeah, I think most urban areas aren't really interested in doing the curbside service because they're seeing so many cases of COVID currently. So it's more rural areas that are doing the curbside service.
Great, because I always feel like we sit, straddle right in between. Not to make it easy or anything.
I was speaking with Sarah about this earlier this week. My thoughts are, if we can do it safely, I'd love to see us try to do it. We're going to be out for a long time, like Jordan was saying, this could go on months more. So if we can figure out a way to operate in whatever limited capacity we can, I'd love to give it a try and see if we can make it work in a way that is safe, obviously, for our librarians and for the public, especially since we're now all homeschooling our kids. Hopefully, that means we're reading books to them. And I'd love to get more books into the hands of the kids in this town as much as we're able to. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. It looked like Carl wanted to jump in here.
Yeah. If we're truly going to be a couple of months out, Jordan, like you say, I think you're going to have a lot of people wondering what to do with their lives. I go out for a walk to the post office now, and I'm trying to stay distances and everything. I see dozens of people between my, like, four-block walk. I think it's really important to provide some of that kind of service to our citizens. It's, I think it'd be really good, I know a lot of people that I talk to are kind of cabin crazy anyway at this point. Giving them something to read would keep them a little bit less desiring to get out and walk around and maybe do some of the things that aren't quite so smart about the distancing thing. I just like Bethany was saying, I'd like to make sure we're safe is all.
And I'll mention, as I was talking with Sarah, we're doing the book quarantining. So when something gets returned, it sits for several days before it gets checked in. So librarians aren't touching things directly from patrons' homes and vice versa. It would have sat at the library a while before it goes back into a home, so.
Jeremy, then Jan?
Yeah, I mentioned this before, you know, that I was asked about this, being able to do curbside pickup in the last two weeks since we've met or week or whatever it's been. Probably the number one question I've been asked is, why can't we get our books and can't we do this since we can go through and get, pick up food, take out food and everything else? And I can attest for my own kids and family that they've gone through all their books already and a lot of other families have too. We've actually had people dropping books off in our mailbox from other families and, and sharing that around our school classes as running out of material to read, which is great. But I know there's a big desire out there. So want to make everyone safe, but I think that there is a path to do that, just like there is for takeout food and other businesses as well.
Jan?
Yes, I agree with the proposal, and I think it sounds like all of the safeguards will be in place. I wanted to thank Sarah for allowing the book groups to continue their work online. So the Zoom for the readers is great.
Yeah, we're super excited to do that program, and we're looking at doing more virtual programs as well. So I've gotten the staff thinking about what we can do. So we'll see what happens, but it's exciting.
John, I obviously can't see you, so if you want to pipe in, you're just going to have to jump into the conversation. But from what I'm hearing, I'm with you, as long as we, you know, do all the safety protocols and, you know, the proper distancing and the time between handling of the book and the cleanliness and all that, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't set up kind of a pickup, you know, drop off similar to the restaurant industry. So, yeah, that's what I'm also hearing from all the other counselors. So, yeah, I think go for it.
All right. Does anyone, do you have any advice on when we should start?
I guess as soon as you can get up and going, you know, you know, if the restaurants surrender, you know, the governor's direction, it's funny, Jordan and I were talking about it earlier. I mean, the direction was basically, here are the businesses that need to shut down. Remain, if you're not listed, you can remain open, but just practice social distancing. And so considering restaurants will be open tomorrow, right? I mean, if you want it, I'm not thinking you're going to be ready to do this tomorrow. But I think just when you feel you can be ready to get, unless that counselor, you know, speaks up and disagrees with me, I just, I kind of think the moment you feel comfortable doing it, do it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So a couple of other quick things. You know, we've been in talks with the school district about, you know, their plans and their response. And I think you know about what they're doing as far as like food and lunches. You know, we've been talking with them about the internet and expanding, you know, SandyNet where we can. And their, the school district will be buying or deploying hotspots for underserved areas outside of, of the city of Sandy. But, you know, one of the things that we did, are able to do is at least get free Wi-Fi expanded, say, outside the library and at the community campus. And if you guys have ideas on other locations that are feasible for us, you know, we'd love to hear them too. It's one way that people can access the internet now that the library is closed. So members of the public that, you know, maybe need to, you know, conduct business or checking, you know, on unemployment claims and things like that, they can, they can do that by, you know, going to a city facility and accessing it outside of the building on our free Wi-Fi. So we've done that. Transit, I think everyone's aware of, you know, the impact of services. They did install sneeze guards on all the buses. But, you know, you've probably read in the paper, impacts to other transit agencies. And Andy, correct me, but I think our ridership is down over 40% at this point on our fixed route. So we are on that weekend schedule and continuing that. Our dial ride service has seen a huge drop. So the, Sam has been able to switch over to being more on an on-demand service for other needs besides just transporting people. So transferring more goods and services and assisting with things like meals on wheels. And, yeah, I think that covers sort of the most recent highlights or lowlights. As we kind of fight through this thing, I have to say, you know, we've been in so many calls and virtual meetings like this one over the last couple of weeks with other cities and the county and other agencies. And, you know, on one hand, this can feel very isolating that we're going through this as we sort of are told to stay home and we get to, get to know our families much better. But on the other hand, we're all in the same boat and we're all in this together. So, you know, things that we're considering and things that we're doing, as the mayor talked about too, is things that other cities are going to. We're all sort of struggling with the same, you know, what does this new order mean? And what is this, what is this new law? And what does that mean for, you know, our employees? And what are you guys doing about, you know, your meals on wheels and transit? So, you know, I've seen not just the city come together, but, you know, this whole state really coming together and talking to one another and trying to get through this together. So we'd love to answer any questions you have at this point. And, you know, any feedback, you know, in terms of our communication or anything that we could do to help our citizens get through this.
Jan, I see you have your hand up, but you're on mute just so you know.
Yes, I have a question for Tyler. As you know, there's been a request to extend the budget period by 30 days at the state level, and we're still waiting for the governor to do that. But I'm wondering how the city's budget is coming along and if that 30 days is going to be critical to you and how you think you will deal with the budget committee.
So that's a great question, Counselor Lee. And lucky for us, we are on a biennial budget and did our budget process last year. So we have no work to do this spring budget season.
I'm very happy about that. I think Jordan's very happy about that as well.
I can't imagine doing a budget right now. So.
It's because we all looked into the future and realized we would need to do a biennial budget, right?
What I would say, though, Counselor Lee, is I think the 30-day period would be helpful if we were in that position. But I also think that given the amount of work that staff and council has put in on investing in Zoom and doing these virtual meetings, we would be able to meet the public meeting requirements that, you know, are subject to us, and we'd be able to figure it out if we absolutely had to. So I'm glad that we're not in that position, but I think that we would make it work as we always do. So, yeah.
Jan, though, we are, you know, part of that same effort is the clock like we are on tonight and stuff with this Bailey Meadows deal and trying to get the governor to do an executive order with some of that. But a lot of what we're hearing from different legal sources is that that doesn't work in an order and would have to be done statutorily, which would in a special session. So I think that's some of what they're debating behind the scenes right now about whether or not they're going to have to get together for a special session because she can't do it, you know, via executive order. So, Carl?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is a compliment heard from a couple of local developers said that getting good response back from Kelly and his group. And so they're getting emails and calls back. So it seems like that's working pretty well. So thanks, Kelly and group. The other thing that I'm kind of curious about, I noticed that we still have some commercial work being done, although I was watching Dutch Brothers, I see it's kind of shut down for the last few days. But how are we doing with the inspections and stuff? Are we still getting out for those things? Or are we letting them go? Or where are we at with that? Do we know?
No, we're, this is Kelly, we're still state, we're still mandated by the state of Oregon, similar to land use decisions, who still do inspections and still do plan review for building permits. So Dutch Brothers is still going through the proper permitting and inspection channels. Terry will be reducing his hours in April to only three days a week. But we still will be meeting all our inspections and permitting requirements.
Right.
I can't, I can't speak to why they haven't done any work with the last few days if they've stalled out, but we have been inspecting the site.
Okay, thanks.
I think, Kelly, wasn't there, I think it was from Terry saying, this was last week, but there was like 1,200 already, like OSHA complaints or something that were being processed?
Yeah, there was 1,200 OSHA complaints two weeks ago. So there's probably a lot more last week. And they are not giving warnings. They're just fining. And this is for both manufacturing plants and also construction sites. And I do believe a few of our local contractors were actually fined just because the minimum six-foot requirement wasn't being met. I used to work construction for three years, so I can testify that would be very difficult to do, especially when you're like, you know, pounding nails together and then actually pushing the walls up with wall jacks. I don't know how you'd actually even do that. But OSHA is going around the state and actually finding contractors right now.
That's a good transition. A question I have for chief. We're going into some nice weather days here. And so I'm not, I do not, I would, I would hate to see your officers chasing little kids off of playgrounds. But how are we, you know, obviously, it hasn't been a big problem in the last week because we've had crummy weather, you know. What are we thinking as we're going into some of these nicer days as far as just general kind of, you know, easy-handed conversations with our neighbors about using our parks?
Yeah, Mayor, we, we, we've talked about this among my officers, and that's exactly the approach that, that we're hoping to take if it does come to that. So far, folks have been really good about it. They're, they're, they're playing by the rules, and we haven't had any, any issues so far. If it, if it, with the nice weather, if we do have some issues and folks are using the parks, that would be exactly the approach is to educate them. And no, we're not going to be running around, you know, issuing citations to folks for this. That would be a very, that would be the last resort. So that's exactly the way we're going to handle it. And hopefully, we, it won't be an issue. Like I said, so far, it hasn't been. So that's good.
Well, it's great. My six-year-old Olivia was complaining to Mackenzie that the city shut down the parks. And so she said, well, that's, you know, you need to go talk to your dad. Sent her up to yell at me. So there is a certain amount of our constituents, this was not a popular decision. Just so we're all aware of that. Jordan, do you have more of a report on the COVID-19 response?
No, I don't. Unless there's any more questions, I think, well, I think we transition from here into talking more about the small business emergency assistance program.
Great. And I'm guessing that's you, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, sir. So going to try and be mindful of time because I'm watching the clock here. But there are a couple of questions from staff report that I'm interested in getting feedback from council on. So let's do it. Staff has identified about 75 grand in funding for this program. Jordan's found about 17 of that from contingency. We're putting eight from the economic development budget in, which was the leftover funding from the local nonprofit grant program. And then we can contribute another 50,000 from the Urban Renewal Agency. You may have seen some chatter out there about, well, I know the Oregon Economic Development Association mentioned this, but that urban renewal funding can't be used for these sorts of programs. Mr. Doofman seems to think otherwise. So his direction has been, he's comfortable with us using up to 70% SURA funding for this. So we're kind of going forward with that in mind.
David, David, did you know, Jordan, I don't know if you remember what community said they did it, but when we were on that county call earlier this week, it doesn't matter who it was, there is another city using urban renewal for their funds.
Right. Yeah. And again, David, David didn't see a problem with it. He feels pretty confident about that. So I'm, I'm good with David's point of view. So the general idea, or the idea we'd been tossing around is $5,000 grants to businesses, which we'd recommend to make equal to all grant recipients, just for equity reasons. There is, you know, I was thinking about this a little more, that would allow us to do 15 awards to local businesses. There's also a possibility of maybe lowering the grant amount so we could spread the love around a little more. Maybe that $3,000 grant awards would allow us to do 25 total awards instead of 15. And, you know, in the talking to some of the businesses out there that I've talked to, the restaurants particularly, they're really not looking towards this as a primary emergency funding source. They're, they're looking for just, well, honestly, they're looking for any help they can get right now. But most of them feel pretty good about the paycheck protection program. I know there's been some problems with the rollout of that thus far, but it sounds like they're going to be able to get a fair amount of assistance through that program. And there, you know, a lot of their costs are lower right now, too. You know, not that that's an ideal situation. But, so I was thinking maybe, you know, a $3,000 grant award would, might be a better idea, just basically to, to spread more grant awards around the community. And I was really interested in some council feedback on that.
Jan, I'm you.
Yes, I think a smaller amount would be better because any small business can get an EIDL loan from SBA for $10,000 just by asking. So, you know, we're really adding that on top of the other grants. So I think more smaller might be preferable in that case.
My only question on that is, is do we have to make that decision now, right? Because I saw in your report, there's some talk about the committee. Could we give the committee the power to make a decision on awarding 3,000 to 5,000? You know what I mean? Depending on need, amount of applicants, you know, I mean, to your point, we may only get 15 applicants. We may get 25 applicants. I just, is there any way that we could give that committee maybe the flexibility to make?
Sure. I, I wouldn't be opposed to that idea and concept. The only thing I'd be concerned about there is, is speed of getting, of processing this whole thing. If we could get members of the Economic Development Committee convene them soon to make a decision like that, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Carl, and then Jan?
Yeah, I think we should kind of watch this a little bit. I'm aware of a couple of, one's a nonprofit, one's a business, are struggling to find a way to get into that money. We got a local bank, I won't mention the name at the moment, but the local community banks here has said they won't do that work.
They've reversed, they've reversed.
Have they?
Oh, I'm really glad to hear that.
As of my conversation Sunday evening, it's going to be announced Monday morning.
It's Friday. We asked, I'm aware of a local nonprofit on Friday, and they said, no way. Well, it's good to hear. But anyway, it's still, to my point, is there's. But anyway, it's still, to my point is there's some confusion going on out there. I know that I don't know if anybody's got any money yet. Maybe there's some that I'm not hearing about, but people are still lining up, getting in a big rush. I know that some of the banks that I've heard from have a long list of want to Vs. And have yet to give the money out though. So I think it would be wise to kind of look to see what's going on and then try to fill the gaps.
See, that's where, and I'm going to go to, I'll go to Jan and then Jeremy and start it. Where this first came up, just to give a little perspective, when Hillsborough and Beaverton really pushed this forward, we all kind of recognized we don't have a lot of money to give, especially compared to the state and federal government. And so I, that's one way of looking at it, Carl, is to wait, see the gaps and fill it. That's an approach, quite frankly, the state's doing with their special sessions. So I see that. But the idea originally was is maybe this week could move faster than the feds and the state. And then allow, even though it was just a little bit of money, maybe we could provide some money to get people to, you know, the grants and stuff that are coming from the feds and the state. So I, so I guess, I, I guess where I come down is I either want to move quickly or later, right? To your point or to mine, probably not somewhere in between.
Yeah. Well, I do know that there's some struggle with getting the money. And so, you know, your point about before the, the federal government and state government kind of get their act together, which I've never been impressed by their speed. I've worked for them for 30 years. Maybe we should be thinking about pushing it out quickly, but again, I agree with you. First, early or wait, nothing in between.
Jan?
Yes, I would agree with the committee having some flexibility so long as everybody gets the same amount. So we don't get into any kind of a hassle with the community.
Okay. Jeremy?
Yeah, I think from what I've heard from a lot of business owners, small business owners here, they are really struggling with just wrapping their heads around trying to fill out all these forms and understand what was given. And so they're mainly focused in on those things right now. And as they're talking with each other and figuring out how to, from that, I mean, just yesterday I was on a call with a couple of them as they're trying to figure that out. And so if we're adding something more, you know, we may get some out there that apply for it, maybe not, and miss out as they're trying to focus on the, what the federal government has done there for them and being able to cross their Ts and dot their Is and focus in on that. And waiting a little bit, like you didn't want to wait a little bit, but maybe wait longer or shorter. So I'd probably want to say a little bit longer to figure out where some of those things have landed. Because not all of them are going to qualify because of some of the decisions they've made already to this date. And, and other reasons there. Some of them have just laid off all their employees already. And so, and getting some of that context, kind of understanding that as well versus trying to be too quick. I think there does need to be a focus for a lot of them to focus in on, I don't want to call it a sure thing, but more of a, a bigger amount that can really change their dynamic of their business going forward. And not distract from that piece of it. So that would be kind of my, my take on it right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of split, you know, you know, I talked to one or property owner has a lot of people that pay leases, commercial property owner and the notified by 16 local businesses that they are not going to be able to make their lease payment. You know, over the next couple of days. So I feel the need to get some relief out there right away. But I also agree, I agree with you, Jeremy and Carl. I think there's going to be some gaps in this thing that we may feel a heavier need to feel after we see how all this lays out. I don't know. Why couldn't it just be easy, you guys? I don't know.
Pardon me, sorry.
I'm inclined to give a little weight.
You're quiet. What's that?
I'm inclined to just give it a little bit of a weight and let the economic committee do a little bit of looking, searching and listening with their ear on the ground and see what's going on, but on one vote.
Well, you know, that's an interesting point, Carl. They didn't mention the economic development committee in the staff report, I don't think, because it, it, it recommended it mainly being of elected officials. But, you know, I, I don't hate the idea of trying to convene some kind of Zoom Economic Development Committee meeting and asking those folks where we could be of most assistance either though.
I would.
And we do have a couple of people on the economic development committee that could speak to that very directly, like Hans Whipper.
And that, and that would be one point that would be, I would want to keep just a clear lens so that doesn't feel like someone's benefiting from being on a committee or not, or maybe it's excluding them because they are on that committee as such. And so I think we want to be very cognitive of that and wise about that for how that looks in our community as well, as for that individual and business as well to keeping that, you know, that fair aspect of it. You know, one of the things that we mentioned last time is, hey, we don't know where this is all going to shake out. We're in week one. What are we in week now? Three, two? I can't keep track. Four, just depends on how we look at it. We'll go with three. And, you know, there's already talk about another stimulus package for businesses and small businesses and what that means. And so there's these waves that are coming through. And so once we kind of do kind of give it out, we don't have more to give out. So I know it's, it'd be nice to get it out there really quick and help something out, but maybe we aren't doing the best thing if we do too, too soon. I hear what everyone's saying, but I don't know. Chew on that for a little bit. Hey, John, what is John think? John, you always have good perspective.
I'm kind of the wait and see right now. I don't think we have enough information to really move too far forward. There's a lot of gaps in everything that I'm hearing, so.
All right. Well, why don't we, what I'm hearing then is, is maybe let's review it again at our next, at our next meeting. And then of course, as people generate ideas and stuff, let's be in contact with myself and David and Jordan, of course, and maybe take a little bit more of a wait and see and see what the state does and the feds do. With the idea that, you know, we're probably going to move forward, but we just want to be the most effective when we do so.
So to come back on the, like, so we're going to kind of wait and see gaps would be, and then I want to make sure we're all lined up to implement and start this program when it's needed. So is there anything in terms of actual like structure of the program and how it's focused on, you know, our local based businesses, you know, brick and mortar versus, you know, chain or you know, more professional services, things like that? Is there any other criteria that we should look at? And, and then thoughts too on how that review happens, if it should be the economic development committee or just, you know, three council members and a couple of staff. Because, you know, the other consideration is once we basically advertise this, there will be a lag for businesses to apply and then, you know, a review. So it's not going to be, you know, if this thing gets adopted by council on the 20th, I don't think we're going to be giving out money on the 21st. It might take a week or two after that too.
Jordan, the one thing I would recommend against is including staff members in that review committee. We really don't want this to come back later and be accused of playing favorites because there are going to be some people left out of this. I'm pretty confident that we're going to get more applications than we have awards to give out. So perhaps three council members and a couple of members of the economic development committee that wouldn't be applying for loans. Like Kathy Stupi.
Committee of five, right? Maybe three and two. All right. Well, three and two. And then some of my thoughts, so to the, the brick and mortar versus and the chain versus local. I mean, part of me almost feels like it should be a business licensed in the city of Sandy. I mean, like where their headquarters are licensed in the city of Sandy. What are your thoughts on some of that?
Well, I think we could probably, I would, if it were up to me, I would just say that like we do in, in, I believe it's the TI program, we exclude any business that has more than a dozen locations. Unfortunately, that would exclude Joy Teriyaki, but that would also exclude all the rest of the fast food places here in town.
Right.
I have no problem with that. I just, I think it ought to be a sandy business of some kind. And some of our businesses have people inside the city, but their business is just outside. And some have a bunch of employees outside the city, but they're brick and mortar, their, their little shop is inside the city. And so there could be some conversation about that, but it should be something that we really have people who are part of the city of Sandy.
But let's also remember that just because it may say McDonald's on the sign, doesn't mean the owner of that McDonald's is not a resident of Sandy that started that franchise, right? I saw somewhere that 98% of these gas stations, you know, whether it says Chevron or whatever else, 98% are locally franchised down here in the state. So we do want to be a little careful to that, I think, because those are our people.
Real fast.
And that's where I think maybe kind of reviewing this and, and fine tuning it a little bit, because these are all great ideas and great conversations and things that one person or two people writing this up, maybe didn't look at it from all the angles. And that's what's great about this little brainstorm we have on Zoom. You know, I wonder about also around the employee base and, you know, did someone just go out of business and then, you know, take it with them, you know, or are they going to take the money and go out, you know, lay all their workers off? And what does that mean? So anyway, it, it's kind of one of those things as well. And is there a point system for putting that together or, you know, do we stay away from a point system and look at on it on more of a case by case and and then do we, are we adding emotion to it versus having it be more formulated in a structure?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just create the ad hoc committee now? And have the ad hoc committee meet and go through some of these criteria questions. And so we're not debating it, you know, during the time we have allotted during the work session. And then that committee can, you know, through a staff report through David, bring it back to council as a whole on how we proceed. See nods. Who's, who's interested on council and being on this ad hoc committee?
That can be.
Let's see, Carl, I see Jeremy, I see Jan. Okay. Okay. Cool.
All right. Well, at that point then, I will just take the rest of this to the ad hoc committee and we will fine tune it and bring it back to you.
For another, for another Zoom meeting.
There is, as far as grant criteria goes, before I go, there is one thing that I've been kind of thinking about. I did put some potential grant criteria in the, in the report. And one of them is how long has the business been established in Sandy? I thought about that a little more and I thought, you know, boy, that's really going to end up penalizing some of our brand new restaurants like La Happy and Brady's brought some burgers, who made significant investments here in Sandy to get these businesses up. So I'm, what I'm thinking now is kind of a two part question, at least for restaurants. The first part would go, do you own your building or do you rent? And if you own, you get five points. If you rent, then it goes to the second question, which is how many years have you been in business in Sandy? And you get a point per year. That way, the, the long time businesses that are leasing here that have been established for a long time, get the same credit as somebody who's made a significant investment here in Sandy, like the people who own La Happy and Brady's have. So they don't get, end up getting penalized through this process. How do you guys feel about that?
I think it's a great thing for the committee to work out.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep. Okay. Good. Hey, thank you for all your work putting this together, David. The only other thing I'd like to see research that was talked about on that same county call. And I can't remember who was doing the research, Jordan, but can private citizens donate to such a fund? What are the legalities behind that? Because I know there's a number of communities who want it, you know, not everyone's hurting right now. There are some that are thriving. So the ability for people to give out the goodness of their hearts to donate, doesn't all have to be public money? Or it may have to be, but let's see if it doesn't have to be. Great. All right. Moving on, Andy, you're next up here, transit RFP update. Thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I, I just want to come to you and give you an update. We, as you know, put the RFP out in late February for transit operations. And we had a due date for the proposals was March 25th. That timeline would have had us having interviews by March 31st, and I would have come to you tonight with a notice of intent to award. However, this lovely thing called COVID happened in between there and the stay healthy, stay in place order went out. And in that process, we had bidders who attended a pre-proposal meeting over the telephone because they were restricted from travel. And we had several bidders request an extension because they were now trying to figure out how to work from home. So we granted that extension until April 3rd. So we did get proposals last Friday. We got three proposals. And they're all large corporations that, large contractors, and they all currently have contracts in the state. So because I'm still in the middle of the RFP process, I can't bring a lot of details to you tonight. I mainly just want to keep you informed and let you know the new timeline. We're hoping that we can condense some of the review time of the RFPs. And, and also the time that we had put in there for interviews. By doing so, I believe we can still bring you a recommendation by April 20th, which was our original timeline. I imagine that will be, I was hoping that we could have two smaller discussions because I think that we will have a pretty lengthy discussion as to what structure we choose in the future. However, that's going to probably be condensed until the April 20th meeting. I, I will tell you that of those three bids, they range in price from $60.81 per revenue hour to $75.99 per revenue hour. So pretty big gap. We did also receive the same day from the finance department, thank you Tyler, estimates of what it would cost the city of Sandy to keep these operations in-house. So I am looking at a timeline that puts more, I'm hoping we can have interviews by next week with the potential bidders and come back to you April 20th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or objections? Oh, Carl, don't object.
No, I'm not going to object. Just a real quick question. Of the three, they all look like they're pretty strong bidders. Nobody has any problems there. So we got at least a couple, three good, strong companies to pick from, no problems that way.
They are three good, strong companies. I, I am still in the process of making sure that all three bids are responsive bids. I can't say for sure at this moment that they are all three responsive. But they are all three, yes, large, healthy corporations.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Well, please let the record show that Councilor Smallwood showed up. She was on a call. And so with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for the next eight minutes until seven o'clock when we reconvene.
Mayor? Are you, can you hear me?
I was going to go to the restroom. What do you want?
I, I just wanted to let everybody know, I don't believe I'm able to pause the recording.
Yeah. All right. Let's keep it going.
Okay.
It's so nice not having to break down a bunch of tables tonight.
It surely is. Yes, it is.
Hey, Councilor Smallwood, how are you?
Good. How are you guys?
We're good.
Holding up, okay?
Yep. Nice to see you.
You too. I'm pretty ready for stuff to get.
I'm pretty ready for stuff to get back to normal.
Absolutely.
Tyler, just so you know, my concern at the moment is that I don't see Any of the people representing the applicant logged into the meeting. I'm just letting somebody else know. I've resent their invitations.
Okay.
You might check to see Jeff if they sign them as attendees.
That's what I'm looking at. Yeah.
Okay.
And so I guess I will say if anybody is listening right now and you're an attendee and you are one of the representatives of the applicant, can you please hit the raise hand button?
John, how do you go about getting just your like photo on your screen there?
You gotta go into your profile online on Zoom and then you can update it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, if I see at least two people that are representing the applicants of Bailey Meadows on the attendees panel.
You do? Okay.
AKS Engineering.
Oh, there they just appeared. Thank you.
And Rand Waltz. Some of these just have phone numbers without names and caller in user numbers. So I have no idea who those people are.
Right, okay. So I'm going to go ahead and promote the AKS Engineering user to a panelist. The other, the other name Kelly was not one of the ones that was provided in advance, but that, I mean, that's fine.
Rand Waltz, he's an engineer for, that works with AKS.
Okay.
I see Ray's in there as well, too. Is Ray with them?
No, he's, I think for the parking stuff.
Okay.
If that's Ray Moore, I don't know. No, he's not with that applicant.
Hey, John, I got some great cookies here.
Hey, I got some milk.
Hey. Can't drink milk anymore. Just coffee and water. And a little bit of wine.
And when you're fancy, you just put up a J like Jordan Wheeler does.
Hi Kathleen.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So Jeff, when, when I do my PowerPoint, Can I go ahead and play it on my screen just to track me going through it? And then you're going to show it on your screen?
So You can certainly bring it up on your screen just for your own reference. What Kelly is going to do is he's going to employ the screen sharing tool to, to pipe it out to everybody. And so just please, you know, when you're ready for the next slide, just say next slide. Yeah.
And is it possible to do pointing?
We're not going to be able to do that just because Kelly's not going to know what you want to point to, but
Sure. Okay, thank you. Appreciate all your hard work.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Jeff, it's, you have Cody Bugan, Chris Caddell, Monty Hurley, Daniel Stumpf, and Mike Robinson, all in the same room together.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Drinking coffee without cookies. Too bad, I got cookies.
Yeah.
But I'm drinking water. Confession.
So one thing we forgot to talk about was when we get to the public comment portion, Are people going to raise their hands During that?
Yeah, we, that's, we should do that. And I, I will, I can read the instructions if you like at that point.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go ahead and have you read the instructions at that point.
Okay.
There is a wave hand function on here someplace. I can find it, but it might be just easier just to do this. Whatever you want.
Yeah. So Counselor, actually, if, for the, for the attendees, rather than the panelists, there's actually a button Like you were saying, that says raise hand. And that, that's what we're going to recommend that people do.
Jeff, do you know for the phone in, if there's a hot key that they need to hit for raising their hand?
Absolutely. Thanks for asking. It's star nine. So I'll, I'll remind everybody.
And then Jan, you, you do know that we closed the libraries, right? Where exactly are you? Jan, it looks like you have a library at your home.
Yes, my private library. Decades of books, some still unread.
You're not going to run out anytime soon.
I'm waiting to read them in my retirement, but I keep extending it.
Yeah, exactly. Welcome out.
Mayor, I apologize for the confusion about the scripts. You have the, or I mean, I'm sorry about the oaths. You have them, right?
Well, they're on the agenda.
Yeah, okay. Hello, David.
Hello, everybody. Do I have my counsel here? Such a weird experience. Yes. No. Bethany.
No, there she is.
Okay. I have, I have all six. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please stand with me for a unique pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of One nation Under God. I'm wearing shorts. I admit it. So Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Pete Sold.
Here.
Counselor, oh, excuse me, Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Hamblin.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Polium.
Here. Well, welcome everybody to our second virtual City Council meeting. As our city manager, Jordan Wheeler, mentioned during our Work session, we're kind of pioneering once again here in Sandy with a virtual meeting Of this size for a, especially with on the agenda, a development, A proposal that's going to have a lot of activity and a lot of testimony. And so We're utilizing new technology and I just, I ask everyone to please Bear with us as we go through some of the growing pains of that. But we're very excited to hear from the community and to utilize new technology like this To be able to conduct business here in the city. Per usual, what I'm going to do is I'm going to just start off with a quick review of our city council agenda And try to provide a little bit of direction at that time. Again, this is kind of unique. So first off, we start with changes to the agenda. And that's usually pretty quick. And then we go to our public comment period. I'm assuming there's a lot of people on the line who have called in to testify one way or another on the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. Please wait for that actual hearing to make that testimony at that time. Public comment will be for basically all items that are not on the agenda, that do not have a public hearing Opportunity. So the only other item on the agenda where there will be another public hearing opportunity will be Under new business, when we discuss the code changes under 10.2 for the parking Parking standard changes. Other than that, please utilize the public comment portion to speak at that time. And Jeff, our city recorder will be providing directions during that time on how to do so. With, after that, we'll get into two presentations, swearing in two new police officers. That's been a big goal of our city councils and I know of our chief. So we're very excited to do that. We'll then get into new business. That will be when we will be hearing the appeal To the Bailey Meadows subdivision. After that, we will be discussing that possible code change to our parking ordinances. We'll then get into our Sandy Police Association collective bargaining agreement, Followed by the discussion of the withdrawal of a hold harmless agreement for 3888 Pioneer Boulevard. After that, we'll do a report from our city manager and then our committee and council reports. And then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to roll call, not roll call. We will move on to public comment. Jeff, will you please take us through the directions for anyone that would like to participate in public comment?
Okay, so for any of the members of the public in attendance, if you'd like to comment on, You know, something other than the public hearings that we have, what you want to do is if you're logged in online, Go ahead and click the button at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. And then we'll just go ahead and call on you in order. So again, if you're online, click that button at the bottom of the screen that says raise hand. If you're on the phone, please dial star nine. Okay, Mayor, I see one person here. We have Makoto Lane. And I have clicked the button to allow him to speak. Mr. Lane, I think there should be a button that lets you unmute yourself now.
I believe it looks like Makoto's unmute. Makoto, please, even though I'm staring at it, please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Makoto Lane, 37828 Rachel Drive. Just to clarify, this, this is the time to testify for the Bailey Meadows project?
No, this is the time for public comment. In the agenda under new business, item 10.1, You will see we'll be taking up the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. There'll be opportunity for both proponent and opponent testimony at that time.
Roger that. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I will be testifying at that point.
Okay, we'll wait for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay, we'll move forward into our agenda then. Moving on to presentations for The swearing, the oath of office for our two officers. Chief Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I have both of my officers here. So whichever one you have on the list first, I can, we can get started with that.
You want to do Michael Boyce?
Okay.
Michael, first, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve and apologize that we're doing it in this fashion. I know this is a very special moment for you and your family. The chief did mention, hopefully we have an opportunity to do something a little bit more special for you later on. But thank you for your will. First of all, just thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Sandy.
Thanks, sir.
Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Michael Boyce.
I, Michael Boyce.
Do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
The best of my abilities. So help me God.
Congratulations, Michael. And thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And let's get this other one ready here. All right. You're going to have to help me with the first name, chief.
It's pronounced Hala.
Hala, okay. Hala, again, I apologize for, I know it's a special moment for you and your family. We'll try to do something A lot nicer later on for you, but thank you for your willingness to serve our community.
Thank you. No worries. Looking forward to it.
Well, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Hala Ling, do solemnly swear.
I, Hala Ling, do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
To the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Congratulations. Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good job, fellas.
Good job.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And moving on to our consent agenda, do I have an emotion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
And a motion by Counselor Schultz, a second by Counselor Pete Sold to adopt the consent agenda. Jeff, will you do so by roll call vote?
Counselor Pete Sold.
Aye.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
I think I have to abstain since I missed the last one.
Okay, Counselor Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Polium.
Aye. All right, thank you. And we're moving on to new business, item 10.1, Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. Let me get some items in order here. One second, please. All right. So I'm going to start by reading some instructions for our quasi judicial meeting. And public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Speaker time limits for the hearing this evening will be 20 minutes for the applicant's presentation, 20 minutes for the appellate's presentation, Three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral, And 10 minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. I will now Open up The hearing. Oh, I open a public hearing. I got to state the application and ordinance number. Application 20-009 AP Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. Is there any extensions from the hearing body?
None.
Hold on, guys. I gotta get you back up here on my screen so I can actually see you. One second.
Are you going to want us each respond or just silent? We do.
Just one second, Carl. Uh, just one second, Carl. I don't know how I lost everybody. But I've lost everybody. I found everybody. Hi, everybody. I found you. Okay, sorry. This was the part of bear with me. Okay. So now, any extensions from the hearing body? Okay, any conflicts of interest?
Nope.
And now going to pull the hearing body for any ex parte contact. Please also remember that if you did do any site visits, that would be included in this. So I've disclosed all of my ex parte contacts via social media. That was in the, in, you know, the, the hearing document. And then I have also visited the site on my own, just to look around. Any else?
Um, I haven't had any in-depth conversations or anything like that, but I did see all the signage along Tickle Creek and saw a few threads on Facebook, but I did not participate in any of them, so.
And I also visited the site. I've had some conversations, mostly general, with clients. And a couple of folks called me up and wanted to say something. I said, no, I wouldn't want to discuss it. But that's all I've had for ex parte.
I've just observed conversations on Facebook. I haven't participated. Have not done a site visit.
I'm the same as John. No participation in any conversations and no site visits.
I have not participated in any conversations online or otherwise. And I've driven by on Highway two eleven and muted from Google.
I have not participated in any way.
Okay. And I will now be asking, well, hold on. I now call for a challenge to any individual members of the hearing body. And to bring a challenge, if you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. This would be it. And if you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Obviously, if you're a panel member, just send you yourself. I'm just gonna give it a little longer because it takes a little longer right now. Okay. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comment should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Staff report.
This is Kelly. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna pull up my presentation here. Can everybody see the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is kind of a unique experience as well, giving a presentation by Zoom. I have not done one of these myself, although I've participated in many in the past. So this is a hearing, an appeal hearing. The file number is twenty dash zero zero nine. As the mayor already stated, it is an appeal to file number nineteen dash zero two three subdivision variance tree. Just a point of clarification, when we originally named this file nineteen twenty-three, we thought there was going to be a variance or two. There ended up not being any requested by the applicant, so it really should have been subdivision tree. So I just want to get that clarification out there. This hearing was originally supposed to take place in March, but due to COVID-19 concerns, we obviously delayed it until tonight. Before I jump into the slideshow, I just wanted to point out a few things. We've received a lot of testimony on this application, probably eighty to ninety letters from residents. Five to ten, just within the last day or two, which city recorder Jeff has posted to the website as supplements. You'll also see there's a letter from an attorney for the appellant who filed the appeal. And there is also numerous letters and email correspondence from the applicant's attorney, Mike Robinson. So you'll see those as supplemental materials on the agenda. I believe there's fourteen of them. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Jeff. There might have been another one added. So those are in addition to the staff report and the other hundred and thirty plus or minus exhibits that have been entered into the record for this application. I do want to say after reading through a lot of the public comments that staff doesn't take any land use action lightly. Many of our staff members live in town or live right around Sandy and we're very invested in these land use decisions and how they impact existing and future residents. However, saying that, we have to balance the needs of existing residents and the rights of developers and development. If you look back at the planning commission findings and conditions of approval, I believe the planning commission and staff attempted to find the best solution for all parties involved. I know there's several people, residents, existing residents in Nicholas Glen that don't feel the same way. However, that was our attempt was to find the best middle ground for both the existing residents and the developer. As you'll note, if you look through all of the materials, there were several things added to this application that weren't originally proposed by the developers, such as the extension of Gunderson Road, the parkland that would be to the south of Bailey Meadows, and some four-way stop intersection controls and other things around the Melissa Avenue and Rachel Drive intersection that were all put into place and all conditioned after listening to hours of testimony from the public and reading, as I said, eighty to ninety letters. So I do, I do want to reassure the Nicholas Glen neighborhood that a lot of their input was highly valued and led to a lot of the conditions that you see in the planning commission decision. I also want to add before I jump to the next slide, and I promise you after this last thing, I will jump right into the meat of the discussion. But there's been a lot of public comments made that the planning commission was just worried about the city being sued. I don't think that's entirely fair or accurate. I think the planning commission is typically tasked with making an offensive decision in light of code criteria, in light of case law, and in light what the city attorney believes to be our best actionable course. So I believe the planning commission did make their decision, not in a fear of being sued by any particular individual or party, but they tried to make the most defensible decision that they felt was possible. So jumping right into the meat of this, there have been several hearings so far. The first hearing was before Planning Commission in December. There was additional one in January that included additional testimony. And then on February eleventh, two thousand twenty, the Planning Commission reconvened. And at that time, they made a decision. What typically happens in most cities and jurisdictions in the state of Oregon is after that hearing occurs, then within a week or so after the hearing, we issue what is called a final order. That was issued on February fourteenth. And then from there, the, the neighborhood or the applicant, anybody with standings, so anybody that testified at the hearings either in writing or verbally, had twelve days to make an appeal. As you'll note in the staff report that was updated a few weeks ago, the appeal was made by a group of people known as the appellants in this case, and that was made on the last day, February twenty-sixth. And everybody can still hear me. I want to make sure I'm not talking to my computer.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I just want to verify that. So the subdivision location is to the south Nicholas Glen neighborhood, which is Rachel Drive, Melissa Avenue, and Debarko Road. It's highlighted on this slide in a red slashed or red diagonal lines. It's to the north of Highway two eleven. This, this slide shows where the city limits currently is, which is the yellow line. This is the layout with the north arrow pointing north on the top. And that's where Rachel, it's basically pointing out to where Rachel Drive is and where Melissa Avenue is. So this layout is basically streets and lots and then track A, which is on kind of the, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but this is track A, which is a stormwater facility on the left-hand side of your screen. And then there's the second track, track B, which is an access off of Street A for pedestrians. There's also, as I'll show in a few slides, Gunderson Road being connected to the south and a park. So here's a slide that I kind of stole from Clackamas County. They have this other permitting software that actually has better visuals. I'm going to be looking to get for future presentations. This shows an aerial of the area. It marks the development site, the existing U G B. Tax lot seven oh one is where Gunderson Road and the parkland are being proposed. And then it's also pointing to where there's a problematic intersection. There's another line that should have showed up on this, but I don't know why it's not displaying. Oh, there we go. The pink line is the Gunderson Road alignment in the Sandy Transportation Systems Plan from two thousand eleven. And that line shows up on a curve of Highway two eleven. So if the intersection went in there, it wouldn't meet the vision clearance designations by ODOT's requirements. So the intersection wouldn't be able to be installed where it's shown on the T S P map. Here's another look, just more of a down, an aerial, more traditional aerial. The bluish purple line is the same alignment, so it's showing that it would be along the south of the projected site and over to Cascade Village Drive. However, this intersection as conceptually located would not work for numerous reasons. So the modified alignment with the park, we'll just add a couple of things here. So it shows Melissa Avenue coming down south from the existing Nicholas Glen neighborhood. Instead of Gunderson Road going to that problematic intersection as defined in the T S P, it comes out to an area that, according to traffic engineer studies, will actually work for site visibility and not come into the super curve on Highway two eleven. This also shows the parkland that would be proposed with the addition of the U G B being approved. And it also shows a stormwater facility that would capture rainwater from Highway two eleven. Here's another overhead shot of the proposed Gunderson Road. And this actually just shows a hash rate improvement, but it would actually be wider than this. I believe it'd be thirty-two feet wide. And this shows where it intersects with Highway two eleven. So I just wanted to cover some of the basics so that when people are making comments, I did this at the Planning Commission meeting as well, but I want to do it here again tonight. There's certain things that staff cannot address with a land use application. And that's either because we're not the governing body or jurisdiction or it's not specifically allowed by state statute or within our development code. So school capacity and school bus drop areas or locations, I know this has been a concern for a lot of people. However, that if you're, if you have concerns with either capacity or school bus drop off, you need to contact the Oregon Trail School District. Icy road conditions, that is a problem in a lot of areas in Sandy because we are a hilly community. We do recommend contacting Public Works to ask for additional de-icer applied, but it's not part of a land use process. Increases or decreases in property value, that's not something that in any O R S I've ever seen or any development code I've ever read through is a criterion that could be analyzed. Fence line disputes are civil matters between property owners. I know in the case of Bailey Meadows, there are several property line disputes that I hope the applicant and the adjacent property owner are working through. Any fire lanes being blocked, this has been mentioned by numerous residents. You'd want to contact the, the police department or more likely the fire district. And children playing on adjacent property, we just don't enforce that. And then a few other things, House Bill two thousand one, accessory dwelling units, portion of the House Bill are already effective, even though our code has not been updated yet. And the duplex portion of the House Bill is applicable once the city adopts the changes to our code. We are mandated to adopt those no later than June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So what that's basically getting at is in the future, is if one of these lots in Bailey Meadows decided to become a duplex, they would be, that would be a permitted outright use. Clarification on public comments, there's been a lot of testimony. These were addressed by both the Public Works Director in Exhibit six F and also by the city attorney in Exhibit six E. The reasons why a four-way stop on Melissa and Rachel are problematic, why the reason speed bumps on Melissa are problematic due to the existing slope of the road, how construction impacts occur to a subdivision and what the protocol is for trying to alleviate those impacts, and then how street expenditures work and that streets are not typically funded by general fund money, they're actually funded by pots of money that are set aside strictly for street improvements. And then for the city attorney in that memo on page one thousand eighty-four, there's clarification on needed housing provisions and on the development agreement provisions, which have come up a lot in written and verbal testimony. So the U G B expansion, which is, which is a separate application, but is kind of part of this whole exercise we're looking at in the sense that Gunderson Road and the parkland are both tied to Bailey Meadows. There's one additional hearing left. It already went to the City Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Clackamas County Planning Commission. All three of those bodies either recommended approval or approved the U G B expansion. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners was originally scheduled to hear this on March eighteenth, but due to COVID-19, they delayed the hearing to May sixth, two thousand twenty. And my understanding, this will be a virtual Zoom meeting like we're holding tonight. So to look at the U G B expansion area, oh, here we go. I'll just add all these colors. So the green area is the park, which is about two point three eight acres. The Gunderson Road right away is a little over one. The stormwater facility for Highway two eleven is about point seven. Highway two eleven, which would be brought into the U G B and then subsequently annexed, would be a little over two acres. And then there's some also easements for construction along Highway two eleven. So the total U G B expansion area is about six point four two acres. Excuse me. So tied with the U G B expansion is parkland. A proposed condition includes that that area that I just showed on the previous slide would be dedicated as parkland, brought into the U G B, and then also annexed into the city as parks and open space zoning designation. However, if the U G B expansion does not occur, the planning commission had a condition that they would instead pay the fee in lieu of close to three hundred and eleven thousand dollars so that the city can purchase other parkland in Sandy in the future. The Gunderson Road extension, as I've reiterated during all three hearings, the Melissa Avenue already exceeds the number of vehicle trips typically allowed on a local street. As you'll see in a lot of the testimony before you, by both the applicant, the appellant, and the general public, is that our, our transportation system plan says that typically a local street should not have more than eight hundred to a thousand daily trips. Nicholas Glen already exceeds that for Melissa Avenue. And the additional trips from the hundred additional lots would put us close to twenty-five hundred daily trips a day. So about fifteen hundred more than the amount that is called typical in the T S P. However, the, the transportation system plan also anticipates the extension of Gunderson Road to Highway two eleven near the southern boundary of the property. Not only would the Gunderson Road extension provide a second means of access to the subdivision, it would also disperse traffic so that we're not, so that the applicant's not adding nearly a thousand more daily trips to Melissa. Instead, some of those trips would use Gunderson, some of them would go down Melissa. And then some of the Nicholas Glen neighborhood trips would actually not go down Melissa anymore instead, or not go down Melissa to the intersection of Debarko, but instead would exit to the south via Gunderson, the Highway two eleven. So if, as the planning commission has conditioned, as you'll see in their final order, is that if the U G B is expanded, the applicant would have to construct the extension and need to complete it no later than when the city issues the thirtieth certificate of occupancy. So to clarify, it's not the thirtieth building permit for a new house. It's the thirtieth certificate of occupancy. And if the U G B expansion does not occur, A proposed condition of approval require the applicant to grant an easement for Gunderson Road. To guarantee eventual dedication of the right away. So they would have to grant an easement. The city cannot accept a dedication. If it's remains outside the U G B, it would have to be inside the U G B for the city to get a dedication or right away since it would be an urban facility. And I'm sure Mr. Doofman can go into greater detail on those. Fine points there if you would have any questions on them. And that's pretty much it for my presentation.
Okay, and any questions for staff from council? Seeing none at this time, people won't be wait. Okay, I'm gonna try it one more time now that I see the whole panel. Thank you for including that, Kelly. Sorry. Any, any questions from, from council for staff? Okay, we will move forward then, and I will call for the applicant's presentation twenty minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. A member to council, can you hear us okay?
We can.
You can?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. You can be mayor, pull your members of council. My name's Mike. My name is Mike Robinson. I'm the applicant's land use lawyer. My mailing address is one one two one southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland nine seven two oh four. Also with me tonight, and I think you can see most of us are Daniel Stumpf, our traffic engineer, Cody Bugan, the applicant, Chris Goodell. Planner with A K S and Monty Hurley, who's off to my right, our civil engineer. All of us are available to answer questions that the council may have. We're also available to respond to what we hear from our neighbors tonight. Our presentation, our twenty minutes mayor will be formatted this way. I'm gonna start first, go through the legal issues. Explain our position, turn it over to Chris Goodell, who's gonna talk about the application itself. And then end with Cody Bugan, who will explain some things that he thinks are important for city council to hear. So a couple of business matters first. I assume the entire file is physically before Mr. O'Neil and virtually before the rest of you. Sort of a unique way to do it, but we think this is working out fine so far. Second, Mayor, we had submitted a letter last week. Asking the city council to close the public hearing tonight, leave the written record open for seven days. Until April thirteenth at five P M for anyone to submit argument and evidence. And then come back and deliberate on the application to a tentative decision on the twentieth and make a final decision by the twenty eighth. And Mayor, if the city council grants that request, the applicant will extend the hundred and twenty day period. Till the twenty eighth, so the city has the opportunity to issue the final decision. So before I talk about the appeal points, let me talk a little bit about some of the, how we've gotten to this point first. From the very beginning of this application, the applicant wanted to work cooperatively with the city and its neighbors. To address the issues that we knew were important to them, Gunderson Road and also the Parkland. We wanted to provide an extension of Gunderson Road, notwithstanding the problems that your planning director outlined to you. And we wanted to try and provide the Parkland rather than just a fee in lieu. Which the city council approved in a February twenty nineteen joint meeting with the Parks Board. So we started by holding a joint meeting or holding a non required neighborhood meeting. We thought that was the right thing to do. We heard the neighbors loud and clear about what they were concerned about. We worked with your planning department and your city attorney to address the questions about applicable approval criteria. And after one or two of the hearings, the applicant submitted the application to modify the U G B, so we could provide Gunderson Road. And we could provide the Parkland. And as Kelly said, all of the bodies that have heard that application so far have approved it. This resulted in the planning commission after. Two public hearings and a long open record period unanimously approving the application. The staff has recommended approval. We agree, by the way, with all of the conditions for approval that came out of the planning commission decision. They're all feasible. They can all be achieved and we think they're appropriate. Third, as Kelly said, we don't have any subdivision or we don't have any variance or exception applications for the subdivision. We're fully meeting the code and Chris can explain that later. In other words, what's being developed, which proposed being developed in this subdivision area. Is exactly what the city anticipated when it brought the area into the U G B and annexed the area. Lots for single family homes at the density that the code provides for. Secondly, one of the issues the councils heard a lot about and the city planning commission heard the same thing. Was the idea that the applicant should be required to do more with Melissa Drive and other street improvements. And city correctly and wisely, I think, commissioned two separate studies, one by the engineering firm of Curran McCloud and the second by John Replinger. Who's the city's traffic engineer to take a look at our traffic study and our impacts. Neither of those studies suggested that we weren't meeting the city standards for level of service on public streets. And neither recommended other improvements other than the four way stop. The current McCloud study did talk about some underlying improvements to the base road. But the city engineer addressed those in the testimony that Kelly referenced you two. So not only do we have, do we have the applicant's traffic study, but we have two studies by city commissioned. Engineering firms that concluded that we were meeting the standards in the code for level of service and performance of streets. So and I want to just make this point because I think it's important for everyone to hear. This appeal can't undo decisions the cities already made. And I think the city in good faith has tried to work through. What they're presented with here, but this is in the U G B, it's in the city, it's properly annexed. As Kelly said, you have a problem with the T S P because it showed a road hitting two eleven at a location that ODOT simply won't approve. And that's why we're proposing a road outside of U G B in the city's acknowledged urban reserve area. But assuming the council approves this application with the condition of approval and we enter into a development agreement later, it's not before the council tonight. We'll build that road, assuming the U G B gets approved. And we think that's the right way to address the concerns that have been identified to us. And consequently, we'll also dedicate an area for future park development. Six, let me talk a little bit about the local and state laws that have been so contentious and so much of a part of this testimony. And and let me start by noting just one slide that Mr. O'Neil showed, I believe it was. Slide sixteen, the the T S P portion. Thank you. The T S P portion that lists traffic volumes on local streets and other streets is not part of the. Sandy Development Code, your land use regulations. And under state law, and you can, I'm happy to answer questions about this, your city attorney can answer questions about this. Because that section has not been incorporated into the Sandy Development Code, it's not an approval criterion. So even though Kelly is correct that the number of trips are going to exceed those volumes, it's not an approval standard for this application. And we pointed out in our letters, and I think the city attorney pointed this out in his January twentieth memorandum. There are two cases that are worth citing to the city council for you to think about. One is Patterson v. City of Bend, a court of appeals case. Where the Court of Appeals expressly said that these can't apply. T S P or comprehensive plan provisions that aren't incorporated into land use regulations. There's the more recent Oster v. City of Silverton case, which is a Luba case. David Doofman talks about that in his memorandum. Oster was an attempt by the city to impose offsite traffic improvements. Based on the T S P, but the T S P was not incorporated in the city's zoning ordinances. So because this application is both a limited land use application and a needed application, needed housing application. The the criteria the city can apply are a little different from what normally might be the case. First of all. Can't apply provisions that are not incorporated into the land use regulations that are found in the T S P or the plan. I think that's pretty well, pretty well laid out in the staff report, the planning commission decision and our letter. And secondly, because it's a needed housing application. Only clear and objective approval criteria procedures and conditions can be applied. I agree with Ms. Walker, that's nothing new, but the code has a lot of subjectivity in it. And Luba has been very clear and I could, we could cite in addition to the two cases I've cited, there are three or four other cases. Warranting case, Grants Pass. Warren case and the Grants Pass case where Luba has carefully looked at decisions that denied applications that were needed housing applications relying on. Subjective criteria and reversed the cities or the county in the case of the Warren decision. So it it's, I certainly appreciate why the neighbors and others may be concerned about that. But those are straightforward state laws. And as Kelly pointed out, it's the same thing with House Bill two thousand one. Cities have to follow them. And so we've tried to do our best to work with city staff to give the cities the things they want. But at the same time preserving our right to be subject only to land use regulations. That don't include incorporated provisions that aren't in the land use regs and only clear and objective standards. Mayor, can you tell me how much time I have left? Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Chris. Now let me turn to the appeal and then I'll turn it over to Chris and then Cody. And I'm gonna talk. I'm gonna try and refer to Mr. O'Neil's March ninth staff report. And where, where relevant, I'm gonna talk about our letters that we submitted. So I think the city council can conclude that the appeal doesn't have a basis. Contain a basis for reversing the planning commission decision. Planning commission did a good job of listening to everybody. They listened to the staff, they listened to the applicant, they listened to the neighbors and they listened to all of the neighbors' testimony. But that doesn't mean that they had to approve it having listened to them. And they believed at the end of the day that we met our legal burden of proof and that's why they unanimously approved it. So let me go through Kelly's staff report, which covers the appeals and I'll refer to it in the same way that Kelly does as assertions. So the first assertion is regarding the city engineer's testimony. City engineer, as well as the other two studies I've referenced earlier, looked hard at the applicant's traffic impact analysis. And concluded that we had met the standards. We don't violate the performance standards. And as I said. The T S P standard is not part of approval criteria that city council consider. And I just want to read, let me see if this is the right time to read this. So this is from Mr. Doofman's January thirtieth, twenty twenty memorandum. This is the first full paragraph. On page four, and this was referring to the Oster case and the incorporation of T S P provisions. And I'll just read it, I'll just quote it. Quote, Luba disagreed with the City of Silverton's decision. And held that those code provisions didn't state specific policies, action items or performance standards in the T S P. That serve as approval criteria for limited land use decisions. Luba ultimately reversed the city's denial, ordered approval of the application and awarded attorney's fees to the applicant. Sandy municipal code eighteen eighty four fifty specifically ties level of service standards in the T S P. To applications for development, but the code doesn't refer to the T S P's A D T standards, average daily trips, what I've been talking about. Therefore, under Oster, the A D T standards in Sandy's T S P may not be adequately incorporated into the code, end quote. I appreciate David's diplomacy there, but the applicant's position is pretty straightforward. They're not adequately incorporated. And we say that not as a way to play dacha or trying to be more difficult. It's simply what the law is. And part of our job is to make our case to you. And so in doing that, we have to cite state law and that's what we've done here. Assertions two, three, seven and eight all had to do with conditions of approval. We think they're appropriate and they're feasible, they can be achieved and they result in the city ultimately. Getting land through the Gunderson Road extension and the park. And if the U G B is approved. The applicant constructing Gunderson Road. And something occurred to me, by the way, in Kelly's presentation, if this application is not approved for whatever reason and this applicant doesn't go forward. A few years down the road, this subdivision will have to allow duplexes. And so you could actually get more dwelling units. That's not something we're proposing. But it's something I think for the city council to think about because that's going to be another state law requirement. assertion five had to do with the two traffic studies, both of them submitted, supported the link after Mobley traffic study. There's no contrary substantial evidence submitted by opponents as of now in the form of a traffic study. And despite the criticism of Mr. Mobley, his stamp, his professional engineering stamp is on that study. That indicates integrity and accuracy in the study. It would be. Unusual in the extreme for an applicant to say something who has to comply with state law as an engineer. That wasn't true and accurate. assertion eight, there's no evidence that Gunderson is needed to address the subdivision's impacts. That are in the code. We meet the level of service standards in your code. And by the way, there's a second emergency way in and out of the subdivision. Melissa Drive without Gunderson is going to be the way that trips get in and out on a daily basis. But the applicant has provided a second emergency access way in, way in and out that the fire district is aware of. assertion number nine has to do with development agreement, which is not before the city council tonight. But there's no requirement to do that as a statutory land use decision. Now that gets way down in the weeds. But the bottom line is each city has home rule authority to do a development agreement and that's what's proposed here. assertion ten has to do with the parks. As I said earlier, our understanding has been since well over a year ago. City council's preference for dealing with the park code. And this site is fee in lieu rather than land, and that's what we proposed. But the applicant has done beyond that to try and provide actual Parkland if the U G B is expanded. If it's not, as Kelly said. Then we'll make the fee in lieu payment. And finally, assertion number eleven, which is the thirtieth occupancy permit. We think that's appropriate in terms of balancing how many houses can be developed, occupied before we have to have Gunderson in place. Trying to do it. In a different way is going to be difficult for the applicant. So for all these reasons, we think the plant, the city council has the evidence for it to approve this application, just as the planning commission did. We're here to answer your questions. So if you have them before the closing of the hearing tonight, we certainly appreciate a chance for you to ask them so we can answer them. We ask that you close the public hearing, but continue the record, the record as we proposed. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris and then Cody will finish. And thank you for your time, Mayor Pulliam, members of council.
Thank you.
So Kelly, I had a slideshow I'm running through real quick. I don't know if you can bring it up or not.
I don't know if you see it, but Kelly's bringing it up.
Okay. Now if I wanted to go through the. Okay, so I say next, all right, okay, so. So you can't, I'm over here, the camera here is working very well. So this slide is really quickly represents the, the team that. All the land use application materials together. I'm based with a lot of skill sets and expertise that worked on this application. Next slide, please. So this slide just more or less shows the location which Kelly covered, so we can move on to the next slide. And going quickly here because we have not a ton of time. So as Mike mentioned, this is a needed housing, housing application. This application is part of the plan progression for this area, was part of the U G B expansion and then annexed. And it has S F R zone. Next slide, please. So this is a snip of the subdivision here. In terms of density, this project has a hundred slots whereas using the same property boundary and constraints. You could get up to a hundred and six lots in here and, and so it's within the allowable density of the dog. Next slide, please. So as Mike mentioned, it's the project involves single family homes. The individual lots meet the lot area requirement seventy five hundred square feet, the dimensional standard. There's a plentiful on street parking included and as mentioned before, there's a fee in lieu payment for Parkland dedication. So I think Kelly touched on this. I don't really have much to say about it, other than this is the T S P plan that shows where Gunderson Road. Crosses two eleven in relation to, to our site and that little arrow going from Melissa from the Nicholas Glenn subdivision to this property. Next. This is an offsite analysis that we put together as required by the city development code. This plan demonstrates that the circulation standards are met. We have block, confined block lengths. Public, a mix of public streets and pedestrian path. And so we have three stubs. Pleasure of them. It's going to the west, there's a bunch. So it was something we talked a lot about with staff and that's why we have them in there. And then it also shows Ponder Lane, which is the secondary emergency access to the site, absent Gunderson. Next slide, please. This project includes all the sanitary sewers, stormwater management pieces. Water and franchise utilities that any subdivision would need. And that this is a type of our composite utility plan. Next slide, please. Kelly mentioned, there's no, it's Mike mentioned, there's no variances in the application. I'm gonna Kelly mention it to you. So there's some trees on the property, but the only trees that are involved and are being removed is part of the application. Are trees that are in existing public right of way and are needed to make a street connection. Otherwise, they're being preserved. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna hand it over to Cody Bugan here. He's the applicant and he has a few things to say with our remaining time. About two minutes, Cody.
Hey, everyone. Hey, this is Cody Bugan over at Allied Homes and Development. Let me first say, I think in eighteen years, this is the first public hearing I've ever spoke at. So if I don't come across as polished, it's because I'm not. I just want to hopefully come across. In an authentic way and show my heart towards this project and this community. I grew up in Damascus, Oregon, so I'm your neighbor. And I just want to let you know, I've attempted to do what I can within reason. And I just want to let you know, I've attempted to do what I can within reason to hold this project together and please what I've heard from the community of Sandy. And it started out at a neighborhood meeting last year that, you know, we weren't required to hold, but we wanted to hear from the citizens. And what we clearly heard in that outspoken meeting at the library was Gunderson Road, Gunderson Road, Gunderson Road. So we went back to the drawing board, we spent time with staff, and we added Gunderson Road to the project. So then we went to our next hearing, and the public had moved past Gunderson, because that was now a part of what we were planning to do, and they moved on to that I should be required to provide a park, because there's no parkland anywhere, and that it wasn't right that I paid a fee in lieu. So once again, I went back out, and what did I do? I created a piece of land that we can put a park on, and it's actually almost double the size that the city code requires. And I've continued to try to hear the community and give the community what we can within a good faith effort. And, you know, the UGV, the annexation, the zoning, the park, the Gunderson Road, the 211, all of those things we've done is above and beyond what we think is required from a legal stance to get our subdivision approved. And so I kind of have been on a broken record with my team that I feel like--
I apologize, but please do start to wrap up.
Yeah, I got like two more minutes. I don't, I just, I've been unsure if the community has clearly understood that all of the UGV annexations, zoning, all those things is above and beyond our subdivision as it stands alone. And anything that is done for the community beyond our subdivision, to me, I want to be, I'm hoping will be seen as a win for the community and not just on to the next thing that they would like to, that they, they expect of us. And because I'm, I don't know where else to go at this point, and I just wanted to share my heart.
Really appreciate that. Thank you very much for the applicant presentation. We will now move on to appellate presentation, 20 minutes.
Can you hear me? Are you going to do the, put up the thing? Please don't start the time until you get the PowerPoint up and running, please, mayor?
Yep. All right, I see it's ready to go. I'm going to begin, time now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for inviting us all in this awkward approach to packing a meeting house. The presentation I have is basically focusing on the two points that have always been a conundrum, and that's construction of Gunderson Road by the developers and the parkland dedication. The concern that we have about Gunderson Road is basically, and what's so confusing is we keep hearing that they will build Gunderson Road. But in fact, as you saw in their proposal just now, Gunderson Road doesn't show up on any of their application that you're being considered to approve to nothing. The only place it shows up in is the stuff that Kelly proposed. And so that, the Gunderson Road location and all doesn't, you know, we have no certainty that Gunderson Road will be built, because despite the fact that the developer keeps saying they will build the road, the fact is, is who's paying for it appears to be the city of Sandy. They will build it if the city of Sandy pays for it. That is our concern, because we don't have any assurance from the city of Sandy that they can afford to build Gunderson Road. And so then we're left with the default is Gunderson Road doesn't get built. So that's kind of the assumption that we're going into with the proposal and the application that's before us now, is that they are not proposing to pay for building Gunderson Road. They will build it if we give them money for it. The other two kind of issues is that basically, we see that it appears that the city code and the comp plan and all that are being dismissed because of possible future Luba appeals. The, we've read through all that, we've talked to the planning director at the city of Silverton to kind of understand what went wrong there. So we're going to cover that a little bit. And finally, we know what a hard job you guys have there. How, I mean, sifting through, you know, 1,500 pages of testimony and, and applications and all that is a thankless job that you guys are volunteering for, and we very much appreciate it. And that said, though, we are, the city, almost, you know, entirely, the city residents are concerned about development in Sandy, and especially that development pays for itself. And we, you know, you're here to make sure that they pay. Next slide, please. So the issue, I'm going to start referring to codes. I'm not going to read every slide, but the, the code language that we have, 17.2040, is, talks about the burden of proof that the proposal has to be supported by proof that it conforms to any applicable elements of the comp plan, which includes the TSP and to the code. 2000 ordinance number 2011-12 adopted the Sandy TSP, so whenever I talk about the comp plan, that by default includes the TSP as part of the comp plan. So then the big thing that's kind of been raised is this ORS 195.197 that Mr. Robinson alludes to and David Dufman's alluded to, and it basically says, here's the, here's the big kicker there, is it says, "Cities and counties shall incorporate all comprehensive plan standards applicable to limited land use decisions into their land use regulations." That's what it says. Now, in talking to Luba, in talking to the city of Silverton, what we found out was that they did not cite key code requirements that they had in their code that tied their levels of service and things like that. They did not cite those requirements they had in their code in the denial of the application. And so Luba found that they had more clear and objective transportation code language, but did not cite them in the denial, and therefore could not use them in the appeal. Here is the quote from that Luba appeal of Silverton. "We conclude the sections of the code that the city relied upon to deny the application, blah, 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 far short of incorporating the level of service traffic performance standard in the TSP." So that's going to all come into play there in, in the next one. Next slide, please. So the code, our code language is, talks about having the city engineer reviewing things, but mostly I'm going to focus on A2, and that's the thing that was mentioned before. "If the traffic evaluation identifies level of service conditions less than the minimum standard established in the TSP, improvements and funding strategies mitigating the problem shall be considered concurrent with the development proposal." Now, these guys were told this initially, and the responsibility for developing other strategies is really developers. They could develop, they could just come up with some additional local roads that drain the neighborhood to other streets, or, or build Gunderson. I mean, that's up to them to kind of come up with that. The code also talks about, "Location of new arterial streets shall conform to the TSP." Location meaning a map, you know, it's located on a map. So that's where we've identified and incorporated that code, that part of the code, that part of the TSP into our code. Excuse me. Next, next slide, please. So the TSP, the standards in there, the level of service standards refer to local streets, and it's actually done in two different spaces with slight minor differences. Local streets have the sole function of providing immediate access to adjacent lands. They have a typical capacity between 800 and 1,080, which is average daily traffic per day, vehicles per day. To, service to through traffic movements on local streets is deliberately discouraged by design. The second definition kind of uses the same thing, only instead of typical capacity, they use preferred capacity. So the, the thing that the lawyers have been telling us is that we need to be clear and objective, and I'm hoping that we can all agree that we can, all can conclude that local streets are intended to accommodate average daily traffic of 810 and 1,000 vehicles per day. That, that seems really clear and objective, or it should be. The next code that we have in there talks about half-street improvements. Half-street improvements are considered the minimum required improvement. Three-quarter or full-street improvements shall, and shall means must, be required where traffic volumes generated by the development are such that a half-street improvement would cause safety and/or capacity problems. Such determinations shall be made by the city engineer. Okay, so that's, it's, it's up to the city engineer to kind of determine whether that's a problem. Next slide, please. So here we are with the TSP, and this is the same map that, that was shown before. As I said, Gunderson Road is not shown as part of this applicant's proposal. And the reason is, is because, you know, they may be willing to build it if we pay for them to build it, but they're not building it as part of their development as it stands now, because that, you know, because otherwise it would show up on their development map. But as you can see, the Gunderson Road is on their property. See, see, what, the city puts roads along the property line so that the cost or splits to either benefiting party. That's why it's located right there along that property line. In this case, the developer now appears to own both parcels, so Gunderson Road is actually, that's in the TSP, is completely on their property except for its connection with 211. The half of Gunderson is an onsite improvement that should be included as part of this application. Go back to that engineering report where he talks about that. They should be actually building Gunderson all the way across that southern pink part of their property, but we're just actually asking, you know, insisting that they should be at least building the red, the red dotted line. So the other comment is that, that while the intersection with 211 moved, that's a standard practice for brown truthing, a master plan, that, you know, when you get down to site-specific planning, things move around slightly. So obviously Gunderson Road could still be where it is shown on the map, and the connection to 211 is now moved slightly to the, to the left. Next slide, please. So the traffic engineering report for the city, the city's engineer is Exhibit Y, and it was originally done in 2019. And this is, what they said, this is just quotes right from it, because I keep hearing that, you know, our traffic engineer totally agreed with them. Well, not quite. What they said is, is that a half improvement would be required on, this, I'm going to the second paragraph, but, you know, they talk about a full dedication in the first paragraph of 34 feet being done, and a half improvement would be required on Gunderson to include 22-foot wide, blah, blah, blah. And at the request of the city, we've developed a layout, but, excuse me, this half improvement would be developed along the south plat boundary as per the TSP. Okay, so this is where the traffic engineer said, you've got to build at least half of Gunderson on, because it's onsite and it's in the TSP. Next slide, please. The traffic engineer continued and said that, you know, number seven was currently this, this site is generating 944 trips, and the combined average daily traffic generated from this site and existing Nicholas Glen is 2,490. He went on to say, and I'm just highlighting the, the main points, but this is all quoted right out of the report, "The TSP alludes to a traffic capacity on local streets between 800 and 1,080. The projected capacity exceeds the preferred capacity limitations." He also said, "We are also concerned that the increase in traffic volumes through one access is detrimental to the overall life and safety in case evacuation is needed." So clearly, I think we can all say that 2,490, 2,490 trips is more than three times the minimum and two and a half times the maximum ADT standard of 800 to 1,000. That is, again, mentioned in our code with the minimum standard. So go to the next slide, please. So then he came back, and this Gunderson Road kind of got proposed, although not really incorporated as part of their development. It's just kind of been developed on a separate track that the city might, could build this in the future if we all pay for it. He's reviewed those materials, and he's, he's reviewed this new proposal that includes this new extension of Gunderson Road, and, and what he says is that he's evaluated that and, and the analysis, you know, and so that's what's weird, is this traffic engineering report even from even the developer says that, you know, the, the analysis depended on an extension of Gunderson Road and a new intersection with Highway 211. So that's why we're kind of going, well, wait a minute, you know, that's, they're not proposing to pay for, for building it. So how is that, you know, so this report says that, 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 you know, coming up with all these great things that everybody can agree to addresses it really is dependent on the extension of Gunderson Road happening. His conclusion is the southern access to the subdivision is dependent on constructing a segment of Gunderson Road, which is specified in the TSP. And I would add also, it's, half of it is onsite of the proposed development. Next slide, please. So next, this section, these are some more code references that incorporate our TSP and also spell out standards, but here's where the streets shall conform to the planned street extensions identified in the TSP, and that, that goes back to that map. The H2, 1784-50H2 talks about grades of these streets, and arterial streets should not exceed 6%, 15% on local streets. Melissa Avenue is at 11%. If Gunderson is not built, and they're not proposing to pay for it, for building it, then, then the city is, and the city can't afford to, as we understand it right now, because nobody's, you know, told us about any, anything else, we're assuming the city's making a de facto overloaded arterial out of this local street that is at 11% when it really shall, and again, shall means must, not exceed 6%. So that's another violation of the code. Next slide, please. So another quotes in the codes talk about street connectivity, kind of spreading out the traffic. It talks about the traffic impact studies, and, and that goes on. So the next slide, please. Next slide. No, I think you skipped one, I think. Okay. This, yeah, so again, seven, you know, we had 17.84.50, and we also have 17.100.100. And this is where, again, things get agreed to by the city engineer who has, you know, who determines whether or not things are adequate or not. He has said that Gunderson Road needs to get constructed in both his September 2019 and January 2020 report. And in B2, again, it reiterates what the other code, part of the code says, is that if the study identifies levels of service conditions less than the minimum standards, then in the TSP, then the strategies mitigating the problem shall be considered as part of the land use decision for this proposal. So, so we feel that the, you know, the 800 to 1,000 is, the level of service is called out here in our code. You know, the, the actual numbers, 800 to 1,000 are not called out specifically, but then again, you know, neither are the, the, you know, none of those local streets that they're proposing within the development are called out. So, you know, conceptually, they could just give us a bunch of dirt streets within the development, and, and because we didn't spell out everything for local streets, then that's fine. And I, you know, so, so the idea that, that the proposal from Gunderson doesn't, you know, we don't have the I dotted and the T crossed and 800 to 1,000 actually, you know, copied, that's not what 197.195 says. It says incorporating these, the TSP standards into our code, and here it is right here. Okay, next slide, the, the last part of my, next slide, last part of my presentation had to do with the parkland stand, parkland dedication, and we weren't, you know, it kind of kept, nobody could tell whether they were paying, because again, even his presentation slides just now talked about a fee in lieu of payment. No parkland dedication was shown on his proposal, but all of a sudden Kelly mentioned that parkland was being dedicated, and again, it's offsite, it's an offsite parkland dedication. And we're thrilled to have a park. Don't get us wrong, we are definitely thrilled. But the reality is, is that there is some standards for parkland dedication. And number one says that the homes must front on the parkland as shown in the example below. So as you can see from the slide, the, the left side picture is right out of our code. That's the picture of what a park is supposed to look like. And what we have here instead is on the right, we have that triangle, and we have Gunderson Road. And Gunderson Road, if it even gets built, which it may not get built, if the city cannot afford to pay for it, and if you all don't require the developers to pay at least, you know, a majority fair share that they should be paying, then we have no road access to this park. We have no homes facing the park. And so basically, we have no variance proposed. They were asked about a variance in the planning commission, and they declined it. So there, and also there has been no staff report assessing how this dedicated parkland meets or doesn't meet our, our code language. Next slide. And so the important part of this is that, the reason this is important is, we have an example of how this didn't go very well when, with Tickle Creek Park. And that was all done before we even had a parks board, prior to this parkland dedication policy being developed. We've got the Tickle Creek Park, and if you, if you walk, you know where it is, it's on the west end of the Tickle Creek Trail. You walk down between the houses, and then you kind of walk, and you notice this big field to the left, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an example of a park with no road access and no homes fronting the park. And here's what's a problem with this proposal is, it gets little to no use-- And here's what's the problem with this proposal is, it gets little to no use and the neighbors use it for dumping dog poop and grass clippings from their backyards. Okay? And so people in the neighborhood don't even know that that park is there because there's no road access and they, it's not visual to them. And so, you know, basically it's kind of like this private enclave for the surrounding six houses or so. So we would love to have a park, don't get us wrong. But the condition for approval is unclear to us and the developer's proposal, when asked, they did not, they said they did not want a variance to turn those houses around and have them face the park. They did not want, you know, basically as it stands now, that Gunderson Road is like bluff road. There's no parking along it. It's high speed traffic. And so there's, you know, it's an isolated parcel of land with no parking and no road access and no homes facing it and does not meet the seventeen point eight, six point twenty. We would love to have it re, you know, refined a little bit to meet a Parkland, these Parkland dedication code policies. But, but until we can get that, then we would require, you know, suggest a fee in lieu of instead of that. And this can be dedicated as open space and that's, that's fine because that's pretty much what, you know, that's kind of how this Tickle Creek Park gets used is just kind of additional open space rather than as Parkland for the neighborhood. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm, I'm glad to take them. But thank you very much, so much for, for listening and plowing through all the, the letters and documents and I'm, we're really, you know, we, we were really concerned that there is no development agreement in place and we don't know what that is. And we have to assume at this point there is no Gunderson Road despite the fact that, you know, people are saying it, but it's not part of, technically part of this proposal that you're approving. So we really would want conditions for approval modified to insist that they pay for the majority cost or whatever their fair share is of Gunderson Road because it is an onsite improvement and because we have shown that we have T S P standards incorporated into our code language. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time and it's been a long night and I'm sure it's going to get a little longer, but thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you for the presentation. So at this time, we are moving on to public testimony and I will read the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone, someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statement of a previous speaker, even if that is all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you, that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email the materials to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. You may also submit written testimony or other documents during the same open record period that will follow tonight's hearing. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and then neutral testimony. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I am now calling for testimony in favor of the proposal. And Jeff, our city recorder will be assisting me in this process. So if you are wanting to speak in favor, we will provide you three minutes. I believe we will be muting you at the three minutes. It's difficult to run and manage this meeting right now, so we're doing things we don't usually do. So three minutes and then we'll mute and then move on to the next person speaking proposed. When you do speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff, I will kind of let you lead this and start up the queue of people wanting to testify.
Okay, so we'd like to start with testimony in favor of the proposal. So if you're in favor of this proposal, go ahead and raise your hand now. If you're online, that's the button at the bottom of your screen or that says raise hand. If you're on the phone, dial star nine. Again, this is people in favor of this proposal and we'll just wait a moment for any hands to be raised. So just, we'll just wait for a second. Just to let everybody know, I'm going to proceed alphabetically down this list. At the, the top of the screen, I have first the people who are calling in over the phone and then after that, which I don't have names for, and then I'll just proceed alphabetically. I think that's, you know, an objective and fair way to do it. So again, I'm not seeing any hands raised yet. We'll just wait one more minute. This is people in favor. Click that button at the bottom that says raise hand or dial star nine. Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
All right, so now I will call for testimony against the proposal. Remember to state your name and address for the record. I will provide three minutes. Go ahead, Jeff, and do your thing.
Okay, the first, first name I see with a raised hand here, this person signed in as Carrie. I'm going to click the button, C A R Y. There should be a pop-up that says unmute, so go ahead, Carrie, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carrie Mallon. I live at three seven five three seven Rachel Drive. And here are my comments. First, the applicant's counsel stated frequently that codes and laws governing the application are objective rather than subjective. Yet he says that safety is subjective. This matter is plainly subjective. It's like parenting. You, the counsel, are in the position of arbitrating between two of your children, both of whom we believe you love equally. You are deciding a family squabble. To parent well, you'll need to consider the rules of the game, both in literal terms and their intent. You'll have to hear both sides of the story with equal gravity. When you cast votes in this matter, they will be subjective. They will take into account both the intent and the literal meanings of the codes and laws as well as your emotions and allegiance to all parties, just as our votes to reelect you or our votes to, for your opponents or our decisions to promote a candidate to oppose you will be subjective. Second, the staff report claims in a couple of places that agreements about whether the city or the developer will pay the cost of construction of access roads isn't part of a permit application as a rule. Why wouldn't it be? Who's going to bear those costs certainly will impact the developer's bottom line. Certainly that decision will impact the city budget. Why shouldn't that negotiation happen in the clear light of day? It seems like waiting until the permit is approved steals a lot of the city's bargaining power. Third, there isn't a clear statement of when Gunderson Road access needs to be complete. Counsel must understand that the residents of Nicholas Glen are very nervous that if that is not spelled out clearly in the application and its approval, that it may be a long time before it's even started. Fourth, we appellants feel that the close association between the applicant and the member of the planning commission whose contract study may have tainted the traffic study enough that it should not even be considered in the application. And we know that the mayor has expressed displeasure with this close association. Thank you for hearing my testimony and so please be subjective and let some sunshine on the dollars and cents negotiation. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you so much, Carrie. Jeff, do you want to call our next participant?
Sure. And Mayor, would you like me to give people a thirty-second warning when they're coming up on the, on the end of the three minutes?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Next name that I see, this person is signed in as Richard and Emily Sheldon. You should have the unmute button popping up right now. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Can I ask a clarification time, question real quick before my time starts? And that question is, and the question is, it was stated that we needed to submit our, our record to the recorder. In the past, we were submitting it to the city planner. And before my time starts, I'd just like to make sure that the city planner is still applicable, if not the recorder, which, which one is the correct one?
Jeff, I'm assuming the recorder works on behalf of us as a council. And so for the best way to get documents to us would be through the city recorder.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Okay, now that my three minutes have started, hey, I'm going to read kind of fast, talk a little fast since I only got three minutes. But before I start, I'd really like to make sure that the applicant, while I admire, he hasn't spoken in eighteen years, I would also like to point out that we haven't really changed what we wanted. Parks, initially we were upset because we weren't getting a park. We're like Kathleen stated, we're ecstatic to get it. We were upset about the money being paid. Now it's strictly down to the fact of who pays for this. That's kind of really where we're at. And, and we, we really are struggling with the fact that it feels like the applicant is kind of just running over our, our Sandy development codes and, and not respecting us as citizens a little bit. And, and I'll explain that a little bit quicker, but as I said, I'm going to speak really fast. I want to start out by saying that as you listen to our appeal tonight, I believe there is one general focus you will hear. That is, we are not trying to block this neighborhood from being constructed. It's quite the contrary. I will not speculate to other people in my neighborhood's opinion on growth as a whole, but even in my testimony to the planning commission, I stated, I believe that growth is a chance and an opportunity for both old and new citizens. I have one of them, someone who chose Sandy as an adult because I could see the potential for greatness the city possesses. But as the city matures and grows, we must do so in a responsible manner. In this incident, this is not happening. Our contention with the planning commission's decision is not that we do not want Bailey's Meadows built, but the fact that there are too many uses of the words if, and that it feels that as if our city representatives are not taking care of the citizens, both in terms of safety and fiscal responsibility. Our city code is being manipulated by both the applicant, which is expected, and our own city staff, which is not expected. Lawyers argue, it is what they get paid to do. Why is our attorney not arguing for us, the citizens? Add this to the other negative observations our planning commission and I, that I will discuss later in my testimony and to me and the others I've spoken to, it paints a corrupt picture of the city's approval process. I submitted a letter to the city planning department that references the S D Cs and points I'm going to discuss tonight. The problem is the applicant's attorney has bogged down the process via a plethora of papers. Throughout this process, the applicant's attorneys picked and choose, chose specific wording from our code to fit his agenda. The problem is to get to a complete overall opinion, you must read the full section he referenced. I did this, but in order to properly review his statements, my document is ten pages in length. This was too long to read tonight, but I expect you will do it before making your decision. I want to go on the record and say, I understand he is doing this, why he's doing this. He's advocating for his client's interests and thus financially succeeding in doing so. More directly put, he's doing his job. If I was an applicant, I would probably want someone like him advocating for me. Why I don't understand, why, what I don't understand is where advocates are for our citizens. Not only for the citizens who live in the Nicholas Glen neighborhood now, whose personal safety is being, potentially being placed at risk, but the citizens of the city who, as it now says, potentially will be wrongfully pleading for this growth. The, the decision not only affects that, I also want to bring into light that Commissioner Mobley, he sits on this. I pointed that out to the planning commission that he went and sat by the applicant. His response was at that night during the meeting that you addressed, Mayor, which I respect, he, prior to that, he made a joke, a statement that him and the applicant needed to set further apart. This is unprofessional and it, and it's just totally, and we asked it, his traffic study, be given the scrutiny that it absolutely deserves. I, I think that's a fair assessment. I would also say that the Luba decision, as Kathleen pointed out, it, it's not the same set of facts. Our code is very clear.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. That's time. And thank you so much for your participation tonight. Jeff, do you want to give the next person with the raised hand, please?
Okay, the next person proceeding in order is Makoto Lane. Mr. Lane, you should have a box popping up to unmute your mic now. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Makoto Lane, three seven eight two eight, Rachel Drive, Sandy. I'm going to address three things. And they've been addressed, but more, I'm going to address more specific issues. They are overcapacity and liability for Melissa due to going overcapacity in the T S P. Todd Mobley, Commissioner Mobley, and the subsidizing of developers for the infrastructure and the precedence that sets for future developments. So Melissa is already overcapacity that's been established and it would double capacity. Municipalities are held liable for creating dangerous road conditions all the time and approving double over the traffic capacity is creating a dangerous, dangerous road condition. There is no blanket immunity from liability from, from municipalities are creating dangerous road conditions despite what others may claim. There's a choice, okay, so the council right now has a choice of which T S P ordinance to break, either the through streets or traffic capacity. And what's the negative impact of keeping Melissa closed? None. The negative impact of opening Melissa, turning it into a collector arterial thoroughfare access to a highway is significant liability and a neighborhood of angry voters. And not only that, it could quite possibly end with injury of a child. There's approximately fifty kids, thirty kids on Rachel alone that play, that cross Melissa, especially they're out in force in the summertime and when it's warm. None of the traffic studies that have been cited take into account traffic from the high school area. It's a straight shot from the high school to highway two eleven and that's a huge neighborhood over there. And which, you know, if you play like a game of, of maze, you're going to go the fastest, straightest shot from point A to point B, and that's through Melissa if it is open. As far as Todd, Commissioner Mobley, is it possible Commissioner Mobley knew about the planning code loopholes and informed the developer of them? Yes. Is it possible Commissioner Mobley purposely didn't inform planning commission, the planning commission of the loopholes so that the Bailey Meadows developer could use them to export the city of Sandy? Yes.
Thirty seconds.
Is it possible the traffic study drafted by Commissioner Mobley is incomplete, inaccurate, maybe even falsified? Yes. You know, there's, there's huge questions of, of efficacy and conflicts of interest despite him recusing himself from the vote. You know, as, as a commissioner, he has inside information in the city and his relationship with the developer is not ethically right. Real fast, we should not-
We're low on time now.
Okay, if he does not set the precedent of subsidizing the developers for the infrastructure upgrade responsibilities, you're going to have to subsidize more developers down the road. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jeff, you want to move us to our next participant, please?
The next participant is calling in over the phone. I'm not going to read the phone number for privacy reasons, but you should be informed right now that you're being unmuted. Go ahead, caller, you have three minutes.
Please state-
Hi, my name is Rachel.
Go ahead, name and record, name and address.
Of course. My name is Rachel and I actually live on three seven five two four Rachel Drive. I just wanted to clarify if I could speak on behalf of my father. Okay, thank you. I have reviewed some of the copious parts of the Bailey Meadows record. The applicant has buried the city in paperwork and threatens the Luba appeal if they made to pay, if they're made to pay anything for the building of Gunderson Road. Our city code, T S P and comprehensive plan clearly identify standards incorporated by reference in our appeal and our lawyer's letter and for brevity won't be repeated here. That archive, that achieve our goals and objectives for allowing development in Sandy that constructs the necessary infrastructure, including roads to support that development. The applicant's lawyer has found past lawsuits referencing O R S one nine seven dash one nine five that implies that because an I was not dotted or a T was not crossed and that every standard mentioned in the T S P was not repeated or reiterated expressly in the Sandy Development Code, then none of the T S P standards were applicable to them. As someone else pointed out, the required pipe diameters for the water and sewer are not spelled out in our county code either. They are put into the appropriate facility master plan in, that developers have easy access to, just like the T S P, and can use to design their subdivisions. Their developer, Mr. Buhan, has apparently spent hundreds of thousands of dollars paying an expensive land, and land use lawyer to find every loophole possible to avoid as much legal, legally possible, paying for the necessary infrastructure in a development that is on the very outside edge of an urban growth boundary. When it's right versus might, the city and taxpayers are being given the bill instead. The developers agree that Gunderson Road should be built and they are willing to make, take our city's taxpayer funds to build it for us and their future homeowners. They just don't think they should have to pay for- They just don't think they should have to pay for it, despite the fact that their 100 new homes will be their primary users. They share, their share should be well more than 50% of the cost. As other parcels around the area develop, they will pitch in too. I'm sure that we are pressing transportation needs in the city to spend our limited road funds on. They will benefit more.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. They say, sorry, I lost my place. They say that they have not threatened to sue, instead, they have stated on the record that they intend to appeal a denial to Luba and presumably request city taxpayers pay their lawyer's fees and, as well, and have done successfully in Silverton. So not a threatened lawsuit. In the latest Luba slash Court of Appeals case that the developer, developer's lawyer cited the city of Silverton, city officials had more-
Thank you so much. We're at time. Thank you so much for your testimony. What, what, now you're speaking on behalf of your, of your father, is that what you mentioned?
Yes.
And can we get his name for the record, please?
Yes, Michael Shell.
Yeah, same address as the one you stated.
That's correct.
Wonderful. And thank you so much for your time this evening, very much appreciate it.
Thank you, of course.
Jeff, would you like to put us, give us the next person, please?
The next person is participating online, signed in as GG. You should have a button right now to unmute your mic. And can you please state your name and address for the record, please? Go ahead. Participant signed in as GG, G-I-G-I. Are you there? Can you hear us?
Jeff and Mayor Poehm, just so you know, Ms. Duncan, Gigi Duncan, did submit written testimony today at 5:01 PM that we received. I think, Jeff, you uploaded this as a supplement?
I did.
I don't know if she was gonna speak on something in addition to this email that she sent, but you do have before you written testimony from Ms. Gigi Duncan that we received at 5:01.
And we can take the time to read that during the open public testimony here this week.
Yep. The other thing you could do as well is circle back. She may be having a technical problem at the end, and see if she's available then.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, you can queue up the next person.
So I'm actually seeing Gigi Duncan, perhaps under a different profile, raising her hand now. So why don't we go ahead and let's try this one more time?
Okay.
Gigi Duncan, okay, go ahead. Can you please state your name and address?
Thank you for the extra help. Gigi Duncan, 18275 Rachel Drive. Thank you very much for taking my testimony tonight. I really just wanted to touch base, maybe touch a little bit of your hearts here, because, you know, I think that we, as citizens, have been talking about safety, safety, safety. We've been being told by the developer that safety is subjective and not objective. All I know is that, you know, from my perspective, safety should be the number one factor in every single decision that is ever made, as far as any type of land use. And, and I think that the second they came to us with, with traffic counts that showed that they were gonna double, possibly triple, the traffic on our street that's already above capacity, should have been an automatic no. I'm not sure how it got to the city count, I'm not sure how it got accepted by the Planning Commission, especially without requiring that the UGB expansion and Gunderson Road absolutely be built out as a condition of approval. I feel that that was maybe something that staff was maybe overwhelmed by the amount of paperwork and substitutions that the, that the developer made, that they were kind of trying to protect themselves for. But I can tell you that, you know, my safety, this isn't a joke to me, this isn't a joke to all these people. If you think about how many people we have in our subdivision, we have 79 homes. You guys have 80 letters. Think about that. Think about voting percentages. Think about how many people voted in the last election. This is how many people care about this. We're not here saying we don't want this development. I'd like to see the development, but I also don't want it to come at the danger of, of myself, the rest of the people in my subdivision, and all the people that are gonna be in the subdivision that we're proposing. And we absolutely cannot allow the subdivision to be approved without the UGB expansion and Gunderson Road absolutely happening. I also wanted to mention the traffic counts as well. I think that the numbers, them saying that, oh, that it's gonna be a little bit less because a bunch of our people are gonna go out through Gunderson, and a bunch of their people are gonna go out through Gunderson, that just, that, that is contrary to human nature. People drive toward where they're going. Places like Starbucks, places like all the fast food places, the Health Club, all these places, Safeway, all these places are down Melissa, the Barco, and up through. And that's what people are gonna do. They're, they're not gonna go out through Highway 11 and go around the city if they have any chance to go up our street. We're asking you to protect us. We're kinda saying, hey, look, we hope that there's not a fatality, and if there ends up being one, we're not gonna be quiet about it. So we really need you to do the right thing and give them their own access and force them to use it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gigi, for your time and participating tonight. Jeff, will you get the next participant ready, please?
Okay, the next person is calling in over the phone. You should receive an alert right now that you're being unmuted. And can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, I believe it's me. It's Paul Savage.
Yes.
37506 Rachel Drive. I purchased my home in May of 2018, knowing full well there's gonna be a development behind my home. But I didn't know it was gonna be an ill-conceived, isolated island of 100 homes, surrounded by private property of multiple landowners, leveraging a residential street that is essentially a one-way street, when cars parked in front of the homes on each side of the street. It's just not gonna be able to accommodate the traffic of probably the 200, 250 cars that are gonna be in the development. I also sent a letter in, it was essentially a simplified version, but Kathleen has already presented tonight, so I won't go through it. But the synopsis of it is, is Gunderson going to happen? And who's gonna pay for it? And when is it gonna happen? That's the big thing. So basically, I have to agree with much of everybody that's been on the call so far, has presented against this. We need Gunderson Road approved. We need it built before things happen. That's all I need to say tonight. Oh, one other thing. The, the lawyer for the applicant stated that meeting TSP code requirements is not an approval for legal standard for this, for their application. I don't understand that, and I totally don't agree with it. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Jeff?
Mayor, there are no more hands raised.
Why don't we wait here for a minute? Sorry, Ms. Walker.
I'm, I'm raising my hand. I don't have one of those little hand icons on there.
David, David, before Ms. Walker speaks, is there some, now, I'm not picking on Ms. Walker, I just, I don't understand the legality. Is the person who gave the app, you know, the presentation allowed to also speak during the, you know, for against portion of the testimony?
The applicant, excuse me, the appellant had the 20 minutes, so they, they wouldn't get another time to speak. That's, that, that was, that was, that was, you know, that happened during that period of time.
I have a point of order question, though, Mayor, and it has to do with my understanding, and I could be wrong, so I need, you know, you all to tell me different. But I believe that we were the ones that filed the appeal, and so therefore, we are the applicant in this land use thing going on. We, we appealed it. The decision, the applicant, you know, the developer has already gotten a decision, and we appealed the decision, and so we are therefore the applicant to the city council, and that we should be the ones to get the rebuttal, not the developer. Am I misunderstanding the land use laws there, Mayor?
Well, thank you for addressing the question to me. I just, I, I, when I hear laws, I turn to my attorney.
I appreciate that. I'm not to talk directly to your attorney, so I gotta talk to you, Stan.
Yeah, yeah, David.
So, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So, the, the issue is whether the applicant is entitled to the rebuttal. And the answer is yes. There's a couple of reasons why. Number one, the applicant always has the, what we call the burden to show that the criteria are satisfied. And in this case, since the council went ahead and, and decided what it was now, everything seems like so long ago, but it was probably only a month ago or so, to hold a de novo hearing, in effect, what that means is that we're doing it over. It's, it's, you know, you, you consider what the Planning Commission did. Obviously, you have, you know, thousands of pages of, of the Planning Commission's record, you have its decision. But from a legal point of view, it's a brand-new hearing, and there's, there's no deference, there's no facts that have been established, the Planning Commission. So ultimately, in this case, given the de novo hearing, and given the fact that the applicant has the burden of proof, the applicant is the one that gets the rebuttal.
And the, and the applicant, though, in this case, would be defined as?
Allied homes.
Even though we paid, we were the one that paid the, paid to, to get us here, you know, $750 for an appeal, plus our legal fees? Okay.
Yep, yeah, you're just, it's a, you have the right of an appeal, and you got, as an appellant, you know, 20 minutes versus the, the time that was allotted to, to members of the public.
And so I'm not allowed to have a three-minute just person, in addition to the PowerPoint that I had to present? Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Is, is that illegal, or is it just something you decided not to let me do?
It's not illegal. It's just more a matter of the fact that you are named, was named as one of the appellants. So your, your time was within that 20 minutes.
Okay.
Let's just negotiate.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank, thank you very much, Kathleen. With that, Jeff, I see two participants have raised their hand in the meantime.
I believe one of them is another one of the appellants, unless I'm misunderstanding. But the other one, one of the, we have an attendee raising their hand. I'm gonna go ahead and click the button to allow you to speak. Person signed in is Jim. Go ahead and click the button to unmute your, your device. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Marie DeBatty, and 37176 Rachel Drive. I had talked to one of the members of the city about the traffic that'll be going in and out during the development. And this... Many people, for the construction site, if people are, if they're allowed to use Melissa to do the construction to the big Bailey Meadows, Melissa will have excavators going up, they'll have dump trucks going up, hundreds of dump trucks, because, one, they have to bring the dirt out, and, two, they have to bring all the rock in that goes under all the streets, all of the sidewalks. So there's gonna be just one dump truck after another coming in. Nobody is telling us when this is gonna start. This whole development, it's like, okay, we're gonna do this, but nobody's given us any inclination when this is gonna start. It's just like, there are certain parts that are left into the dark. And besides the dump trucks, we don't even know all the other heavy-duty material, trucks or vehicles that are gonna be up there. We're gonna have the contractors go up, we're gonna have the, you know, the cement trucks. We're gonna have the rollers going up, we're having all this stuff going up Melissa Drive for this development. So my proposal is that Gunderson be put in, and that's where all the traffic to put this development in. Because I just can't see all that stuff going up Melissa with already this traffic thing that everybody's been talking about, and the safety of our children. Again, like Gigi said, the, is safety. And another thing, whoever decided to put this property to begin with in the city boundaries, what were they thinking? I think it all began with whoever decided this property was gonna be put in, because there, this was the problem all along with this property. There was no exit, and there was no entrance way. And of course, nobody knew that 100 homes would be put back there.
Thirty seconds.
The beginning of this whole problem was with the city. And if they had looked at this, we might not have been going through this horrible mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
So Mayor, we, we just have one more hand raised, but it is another one of the appellants. So I guess that's a decision. I'm, I mean, it sounds like you're just saying that we're, you know, that's not, that this is not the appropriate time for that.
It may show up as the name, but it may not, it may be their spouse or something like that, so.
Okay.
You might find that out.
Mayor, should I go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Participant signed in as Aaron Findley. I believe you are unmuted now.
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I was having some tech issues, and I guess I need some quick clarification on whether I have three minutes, or I'm a panelist.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that you're an applicant. It looks like the, I, I mean, you're the appellant. It looks like the applicant does have a statement on this issue that they would like to make. We have been allowing the appellant to make a lot of statements. Jeff, would you mind unmuting AKS engineering?
Okay, just a moment.
We're unmuted.
Hi, guys.
Hi, hi, Mayor. You may get to like this idea of controlling who can talk and who can't talk.
Believe me, we're never going back to chambers.
So, I, I don't wanna make this any more lengthy or prolonged or cumbersome or difficult than it is, but Ms. Findley is one of the appellants, and the appellants had 20 minutes. So if you let Ms. Findley talk, then I think you have to let the other appellants talk, and I think your city attorney has already advised you. All of the appellants had their 20 minutes. Ms. Walker chose to use it. That's the appellant's time. So thank you for letting me speak.
I appreciate that, and I, I, I do agree as far as process goes here. So let's, I, I, I apologize, Ms. Findley, on your three minutes, but thank you very much. You guys have been provided your 20 minutes of allotted time.
And the other thing to remember as well is that, I know you haven't decided this yet officially, but I think there is the recommendation and the request to leave the record open. And so there will be more time for people to submit additional testimony at that point.
Absolutely. Okay, Jeff, is there anybody else in the queue?
There are no other raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna move on to neutral testimony. It's the same process. General comments, neither for nor against a proposal. I'll remind you to state your name and million address for the record. You'll also be provided three minutes each. Please remember the, if you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized.
So just giving it a minute to see if anyone raises their hand. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, so with that, Kelly, I will turn back to you for the staff recap and recommendation before the rebuttal by the applicant.
Okay, yeah, I did, I did wanna point out one quick clarification when Ms. Findley was trying to speak, and that is when I received the PowerPoint from Ms. Walker today, I did ask her if she was going to be taking up the entire 20 minutes of appellant speaking time or not. So I, I did pre-warn them that they have twenty minutes as the appellants, not just one person that is one of the appellants. Um I did wanna also point out that um I'll, I'll address the appellants uh testimony first. Level of service, which was brought up, is not the same thing as average daily trips. Actually got this confirmed from our public works director earlier today. Level of service, he said, is a metric for intersection performance, or ADT is a measure of road rate uh, is a measure of roadway capacity. While the ADT levels in the TSP may be exceeded on Melissa between the intersection of Debarko and Melissa, they could still meet the LOS, which is level of service standards. Um and we had asked them that earlier today because we had noticed in the attorney's letter, Ms. Richters, from the appellants, that they were talking about level of service. I just wanted to point out, I'm not an expert on level of service by any means, uh but I just wanted to point out that that is a different standard than the average daily trip standard, which has been quoted by most of the people in their testimony and also verbally. Um I also wanted to point out for clarification purposes that we value the tra, the city traffic engineer, Mr. Reblinger, and the city engineer, which is Curran McLeod, which is Hassan Abraham. We value their input. However, neither one of them are land use planners or land use attorneys. So sometimes when they make recommendations, they don't always fall within existing ORS or case law. So that is why I rely on our city attorney, Mr. Guthman, for guidance on those items. So it's not, I don't think it's fair to say that just because the city, city engineer or the city traffic engineer puts something in writing, that, that should be an absolute and that city staff should always follow those recommendations because we also have to consult with our city attorney on legal matters. Melissa Avenue will not be a de facto arterial, it will still be a local street. Um and then I, I did wanna point out that, as Mr. Savage brought up, that having cars actually parked on Melissa is actually, for traffic calming reasons, is actually a good thing. It actually slows down vehicles uh moving along the road. That's why, why, why our local streets are so narrow in Sandy, is it's actually meant to be a traffic calming measure. I know not all people like that. We have parking on both sides and then it narrows down the road right away, but it does actually slow down traffic. It's scientifically proven um in studies. The other thing I want to point out in the appellants' testimony is that standards for dedication was stated was not addressed. The houses actually, because the applicant did not apply for variance, the houses on the southern edge of the development, the front doors of those houses would actually have to face the park. Now, there wouldn't be a street in between the front doors and the park, but the front doors of those houses would face the parkland. And then the, the thing that was brought out about Tickle Creek Park and not being developed, I can't really speak to that. That dedication occurred long before I worked at the City of Sandy. I don't think there's any amenities in that park, so I don't know why people would visit the park. And it's quite overgrown with vegetation. So if we have parkland and we'd like to utilize it, my advice would be to include that in the park's master plan and to actually incorporate some improvements to that part and get them built. Uh I think you would actually find that there would probably be a lot of people actually using that area if there was something to do there and if the area wasn't overgrown. So um other than that, I can't really speak to how that was dedicated or why that was dedicated with no streets since uh I did not work at the City of Sandy. Um I only have two other things to point out. Staff is not manipulating the code at all. Um that was pointed out by Mr. Sheldon. What we are doing is taking the code and applying it to the application, just like we do with all land use matters. We do get interpretations from our city attorney. So that is what we do in this land use hearing and in all land use hearings and in all the land use matters. We're not trying to manipulate anything. And then, as pointed out by Ms. Duncan, as a point of clarification, uh she asked why it was accepted by the planning commission. Once we get a land use submittal and we deem it complete, we have to process the land use application. One of the primary reasons why it actually went to planning commission is because we were getting so much input that I felt it was more necessary for a body to hear uh comments from the public instead of it just being a staff-level decision. It was, it was analyzed by the planning commission. It had to be analyzed by the planning commission whether people feel uh the, the proposal is safe or not. It would still have to go to the planning commission and then they would weigh the merits and give a decision as they have. So that's all I have for tonight on the rebuttal.
Thank you, Kelly. Um all right. So Jeff, will you go ahead and mute AKS uh Engineering for the ten-minute rebuttal?
Okay, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first of all, as we, as we should do, we appreciate everyone's time tonight. Uh we appreciate those citizens who took time out of their private lives to testify and we appreciate the council listening to us as the planning commission did. Although I think this comes down to, oh, let me ask this. I wanna ask Mayor if either Mr. Goodell, Mr. Bugan, or Mr. Hurley have anything to say. Is there, okay, I think I'm gonna do rebuttal and hopefully I'll take less than ten minutes. So this comes down, I think, as the appellant said, to Gunderson Road and the parks. And I've spent most of my time talking about that, but I wanna address two, two other issues for you. We acknowledge that neighbor, neighborhoods are, you know, construction traffic is, is not great. But that would happen regardless of uh what goes in here. And, and we, there are two things that the council, I think, should take comfort on. One is, we, the applicants pledged to do everything it can to minimize construction impact. So to the extent we can, we can do things which will make it easier on the neighbors, that's our desire. We have no desire to have construction traffic cause problems. And secondly, there are conditions of approval that the planning commission adopted in its decision, which address construction traffic. We are happy to rely on that. And if your staff has additional suggestions when we actually begin our construction, we will listen to them. It's not something we're going to ignore. It's important to us to do as good a job as we can minimizing impact. And I wanna talk about Mr. Mobley before I turn to the other issues. So Mr. Mobley recused himself from the planning commission. That's what the conflict of interest laws require. It, it's not, I guess I'll just say it this way. The council chose to have a de novo hearing. Oregon law says when you have a de novo hearing, errors, procedural errors, like conflict of interest that occurred in the lower body, the planning commission, are cured by that de novo hearing. So as, as your city attorney told you a moment ago when talking uh to Ms. Walker, this is a completely new hearing. And Mr. P, Mr. Mobley did not break the law. He didn't do anything wrong. We understand the unhappiness. But he did everything state law required him to do. But even if there was a legitimate conflict of interest, this de novo hearing, in our opinion, cures that. So I appreciate people repeating that, but it's not a basis for the city council's decision. So let me talk, let me talk about, I'm gonna do this um in reverse. I'm gonna talk about the park first. So we've said in our written submittals and we told the planning commission this, because this is a needed housing application, the city is precluded from applying subjective standards. The very choice that the code anticipates in seventeen eighty-six between dedication or fee and lieu is subjective. It says, your city attorney quoted the language from Luba, it's a value-laden analysis. That's what state law prohibits for subdivision applications like this. So that's the first point. But secondly, as I said earlier, in the joint park city council meeting in February twenty nineteen, at the very end of the meeting, my understanding was council said for this one, they wanted to choose fee and lieu. And we're fine with that. So from that point on, we didn't, we didn't uh plan for parkland here. But as Cody said, after the hearings, when he heard how sincere the neighbors were about wanting parks, that's when he included his obligation for the UGB expansion to include parkland. And as Kelly said, it's about twice the amount of area, you know, or I guess Cody said it, as the city would otherwise get. But then secondly, I wanna point out that seventeen eighty-six twenty minimum parkland standards is subjective itself. And I, I apologize for continuing to come back to that. That's my obligation. I am a lawyer. That's my job. And I just wanna point out that section says, quote, "Land required or proposed for parkland dedication." So required is a subjective term. We're not proposing it. It's, it requires, again, that value-laden analysis um that state law prohibits. It also includes continuous unit and suitable. Those are subjective standards too. But, but the bottom line is, this is something, I think Kelly got to the heart of the matter. And this was embodied in the city council's discussion with the parks in, the parks board in twenty nineteen. As Kelly said, with respect to Tickle Creek, better to get fee and lieu and improve the parks that are on the park master plan. This is not on the park master plan and it would just sit there because the applicant isn't obligated to improve it. So rather than ignore what the neighbors wanted with respect to parks, we proposed a park as part of our UGB application. And by the way, everyone who has testified publicly at the city and county level is testified in support of the UGB application. And we, we appreciate that. So let me talk about Gunderson Road, a couple of things. So nowhere in Ms. Walker's, in the appellant's presentation, did she give you a citation in your land use regulations, the Sandy Development Code, where the TSP provision regarding ADTs is specifically incorporated. In fact, at the end of her presentation, she acknowledged that the eight hundred to one thousand trips are never called out specifically in the land use code. Let me then key on that word specifically. That's what both Luba and the Court of Appeals have said is required to properly incorporate a TSP or a general plan provision. In the Oster case from Silverton, and I'll talk a little more about that in just a second. Luba said, quote, "We conclude that the sections of the Silverton Development Code that the city relied upon denied the application fall far short of incorporating the traffic performance standards in the TSP under the incorporation standard in state law, as interpreted in Patterson v. City of Ben. These provisions do not make clear what specific policies, action items, or performance standards contained in the TSP apply as approval criteria for limited land use decisions." That's the same issue here. The TSP is not an approval criterion. And it's not me saying that. It's what Luba has said in two cases we've cited to you in our, in our letters and in, in what the Court of Appeals said in Patterson. And they said thus, by its terms, the ORS one ninety-seven, one ninety-five-one provides that if a local government does not incorporate specific plan provisions into its enactment, the plan standards set out in those provisions are not applicable to land use applications. That's the situation you find yourself in today. And the appellant expressly acknowledged that those, that ADT level was not incorporated into the land use regulation. That's unfortunately the end of the analysis. But as we've tried to say, we've gone beyond that and we're trying, without waiving our rights, to provide Gunderson Road. The, the other thing I wanna talk about, and I apologize, I'm gonna find my notes. The development agreement is gonna be decided by this council in a subsequent public meeting. Now, you, I don't know whether you'll take testimony, but it's not gonna be done in the dead of night. It's gonna be a public action. The, the issue about Gunderson, about who pays, first of all, this applicant's already spent about two hundred thousand dollars trying to get the UGB submitted, working with ODOT, working with the State of Oregon, working with the county and starting construction, starting, I'm sorry, starting the plans for Gunderson Road. It's not, so he's not paying anything. He is. But here's the legal issue. If we don't have an obligation to construct Gunderson Road and the, the only evidence in this record before the council is that we meet the level of service performance standards, that's the only performance standard that applies to traffic in this application, if we meet that, there can't be a legal requirement to have us construct Gunderson. So we are working with city staff on the DA. It's not final and it'll come back to the city. But can the city force the applicant to build Gunderson or pay for it entirely? No, because, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but the answer is no, because there's no impact from the application that requires Gunderson. So I would certainly agree that this is complex and it's complex. There's an analysis of the laws. But at the end of the day, Mayor Polian, members of city council, we met our burden of proof. The staff believe that, planning commission believe that. They are not in our hip pockets, as has been suggested. And by the way, I figured out the law all on my own without Todd Mobley. We meet the approval criteria that are relevant to this application. And as much as the neighbors are, are dissatisfied with that and we appreciate their dissatisfaction, if the city council were to apply standards that the court and Luba said can't be applied, then it's, it's going to be a difficult outcome, I believe. And I don't say that in a threatening or difficult way. I'm just pointing out the law. So thank you for listening to me tonight. We hope that you will keep the written record open as we proposed. If you do so, we will extend the clock and waive our final written argument. And that period, Mayor Polian, is outlined in our letter. We hope that after you consider everything, that you will approve this application, which we believe is the right thing to do legally and because the applicant has done everything it can to address the issues raised by our neighbors. And so we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. And so that's the end of the rebuttal by the applicant. Counsel, I am now looking for a motion to close the public hearing, but leave the written record open for seven days.
So moved.
I'll second. I have a motion uh by Counselor Hamlin, a second by Counselor Exner, to close the public hearing, but leave the written record open for seven days. Jeff, will you uh call the vote by roll, please?
Counselor Petezel.
Hi.
Counselor Smollett.
Thanks for that on the far call.
Counselor Hamlin.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Exner.
Hi.
Counselor Schultz.
Hi.
Mayor Polian.
Hi.
All right.
I need to make, I need to make a point of clarification because I don't think it was made earlier. But um when you're setting the submission date, that's gonna have to be by email because I can't promise that anybody's gonna be in city hall at five PM on the thirteenth of April. So we're gonna have to receive everything um by email by Friday or by Monday, April thirteenth at five PM.
And Kelly, should that be going um to Jeff, the city recorder in this instance, or be going to you?
I'd say I'd prefer to go to Jeff. If you can CC me also, that'd be great. But if it goes to Jeff, then it's been received.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing I would suggest doing, uh so we don't have to provide a subsequent notice, is decide uh whether you would then convene on uh the twentieth, is that right? Two weeks from tonight uh to deliberate and make a decision. And if that's acceptable schedule-wise, I would then ask for a, a motion to that effect as well.
I'll move to reconvene for deliberations on April twentieth.
On, thank you for the enthusiasm, Counselor Schultz. Uh we currently have a motion and a second on the floor though. So David, do we need a restructure? We need to vote on this and then open up for Bethany's motion, correct?
Uh I'm sorry, I guess I missed, I thought the motion was to uh
We already took a vote, right?
Yeah, we took that.
We took that vote, I believe.
You know, I voted. I don't remember my name being called.
You did.
Yeah.
About a night. Sorry, Counselor Schultz. Go ahead. Sorry.
There is a question out there.
There is?
AKS has a question.
They do. Um I moved them over to the attendees' side now that the, that portion of the hearing is over. I guess that's up to your discretion, Mayor.
So is it, is it, I guess the question would be, is it just about the open record period procedure, not about substance? I know that, I guess we don't know unless we ask them, but that would be what I'd want it limited to at this point.
Mayor, would you like me to allow them to speak?
Yes, as, as long as it's to David's criteria there that he laid out.
Okay, AKS Engineering, uh you should be able to unmute your mic now. Can you hear us? You appear to be unmuted.
All right. I say we go ahead and take them back off.
Okay.
Hang on, there's a phone line that they raised their hand on to on sixty-one fifty-one, the last four. So they might be running audio through a phone line.
Shall I give it a try, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Call it. Yes, go ahead.
So I, Mayor, thank you. We didn't hear, we were kicked offline. We did not hear what um the city attorney was discussing with you. So would you mind repeating that? And if there's a question for the applicant, we can respond.
Mike, it was just a uh request that they uh move to continue uh, I guess, really to have their deliberation on uh April twentieth, and there was a motion and a second to that effect. I don't know if you didn't hear, hear the issue about getting uh testimony to the city recorder by uh Monday, uh the thirteenth, five PM. That all has to be by email.
We, we heard the discussion, David, about uh the email by five PM, but not to the city recorder. Is that who the council wishes it to go to, the city recorder?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And CC Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all clear.
Okay. Counselor Schultz, you have a motion?
Move to reconvene on April 20th for deliberations.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Schultz, and I'm sorry, Jan, he beat you. Counselor Hamlin. Jeff, will you please roll call vote?
Counselor Petezel.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
I wasn't here for the discussion, so I'll abstain.
Very well. Counselor Hamlin.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Schultz.
Hi.
Yep, Mayor Pulliam. Did I miss Counselor Exner? I apologize.
You did. Yay.
And Counselor Schultz voted aye. Mayor Pulliam.
Aye.
He didn't share his cookies.
I ate them all up.
All right. Thank you. And we will move on and new business at 10.2. Code, recommended code change on parking standards. Yeah, question, Counselor Exner?
Real quick, either I didn't get it, or I couldn't download it. I didn't get the appellant's slide, and I don't think I got the AKA, the developer slides. Is there a chance I could get, make sure I get a copy of those?
And they are both included on the agenda packet now, Counselor Exner.
Okay, you, I may have to help, have you helped me? Because I, no, I couldn't download those things if that was true. And then also the Luba decision about the Silverton thing. Is that someplace I can look that up?
Uh, I can provide a copy for the record, and we'll get that in during the seven day period.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor. Yep, no problem.
And those files are quite big, so you may just need to be patient and let, you have really fast internet, but the site that's sitting on is slow. So just be patient.
I know it's. I'm struggling with it all day.
Not normal for people in the city of Sandy, but the website it's hosted on is slow.
Okay, yeah. Counselor Exner, you're home all day, buddy. You can do it.
Oh, thanks.
It's like every other day.
Computer walking out.
All right. Next item on parking standards. Kelly.
Hey, um, hold on one second here. I have so much stuff in front of me. Okay. So what you have before you tonight is changes to chapter 1798 in the development code, mainly around parking and access, and then also loading zones and driveways. So in preparation of this, we notified DLCD as is required. We put legal notices in the paper. And then I also, which is a little different than what we've done in the past, but instead of having kind of like a working committee or an ad hoc committee, we actually just asked different firms and different architects and different groups for input. And I actually think it led to a faster result than would be typical with a working committee. And I think we got kind of to the same result that we would have. So we asked all county surveyors and planners, Furwood Design Group, Sisal Engineering, Access Design Group, Cult Valley Partners, who's, are doing the Dutch Brothers, so they're familiar with our code, Tracy Brown Planning Consultants, and Robert Moser Architects. I also asked the Public Works Director for input, and he provided input. We also asked our city engineer to do some of the drawings that we're incorporating. And then, so we got a lot of input from different people that I just listed. Those are all included as exhibits. And then the main thrust of this entire thing is basically to remove off-street parking requirements in the downtown in our C1, so that development is more efficient in that you can put more building on sites, and also so that people are basically paying property taxes for their building, or they're actually making the revenue instead of for parking spaces. The code changes would still allow developers to put in parking at the quantities specified in the code within the C1 district. It just wouldn't require it. So instead of, there's a lot of publication, a lot of information out there that the last 40, 50 years of land use planning, planners have been dictating, for example, like a McDonald's, how many parking spots they need, when really McDonald's, who have tens of thousands of stores, they know how many spots they need in different locations. So really, instead of the planners dictating as much on parking requirements, we're basically turning it back to the developers and saying, how many spots do you think you need within our downtown? Some developers will probably want to still meet the minimum parking thresholds within the other zoning districts, and some developers will probably be fine with not having any off-street parking. Now, I'm saying that we are requiring within our other commercial and industrial zones for there still to be off-street parking requirements. As you get away from the downtown, there's less transit availability, and it's also less walkable. So there will still be parking requirements. There'll just be decreases to what's currently in the code. And then the parking standards within the residential zones won't change very significantly. We do have a lot of people that commute in and out of Sandy. Also, our schools are spread pretty far around town. So I think we still need a lot of off-street parking for our residential neighborhoods. So those requirements are pretty much all staying intact with a few small changes. For example, the multifamily, we're not going to worry about any bedroom units above two. If you're above two, three, or four, it would fall under the same off-street parking requirements as a two-bedroom unit. And the reason why I put that forward is because we've actually had developers say they would like to provide more three and four-bedroom apartment units, but our parking requirements dictate that they would then need parking spots. And it actually has decreased the number of three and four-bedroom apartments that we would have seen in Sandy. So I want to get rid of that archaic code language that would require too many parking spaces. And then the other, the last thing I just want to bring up is one of the other big code provisions that this is going to be looking to change is for daycare uses. I'm just going to get right to this section. Currently, daycare uses would fall under, you know, one space per every so many square feet. However, because we've been declared a daycare desert, and because we want to promote easier daycare development, even outside of the C1 zoning district. So if the daycare is inside the C1 zoning district, they would have to provide zero off-street parking spaces if they so desired. Outside of the C1 zoning district, they would only actually have to provide two for the entire facility, plus one per employee on the larger ship. So it would be a, it would be a reduction from what the code currently requires. The last thing that I'll talk about or cover here in my staff recap is that it did go to Planning Commission on February 24th, 2020. They recommended approval, pretty much as the staff has outlined, with a few exceptions. They asked for additional descriptions to the acronyms for point of tangency, point of curvature, and point of reverse curvature in section 1798-100. City staff has included that in the revised code changes that are before you tonight. The other thing, which staff doesn't feel that strong one way or the other, but Mr. Ray Moore submitted some testimony. He also submitted some additional testimony to me just a few minutes ago, so I haven't even had a chance to afford it. But basically, he's hearing from developers that they would really like us to consider changes to 1798-200. So right now, in 1798-200, we require that for any new single-family homes, duplexes that, or townhouses, that you provide one on-street parking space per new house at 200 feet, and no more than 200 feet from the dwelling unit. What they proposed was to move that from 200 feet to 400 feet. Staff then thought that was a decent proposal from Mr. Moore. 400 feet is consistent with a block length in our development code, so I thought it was a reasonable distance that people, especially visitors, can walk to your house. So we had, before Planning Commission, supported Mr. Moore's code change and bumped it to 400 feet. Planning Commission felt differently about it, and their recommendation before you tonight is to leave it at 200 feet, as it currently is written into code. I don't have a strong opinion about it one way or the other. I have heard from Mr. Moore and several other developers, it's very hard to meet, especially for, what's that, sorry?
Kelly, considering you, staff had recommended it though at 400, and commission changed it back to 200, and there's this opinion out there, would you mind, at the best of your ability, taking us through why the commission decided to not go with the 400 and go to the 200?
Um, from what I can recall, it's been a month and a half, and we've had a lot of things happening in all of our personal work life. You know, I don't know, I don't know if I'm going to get this 100% accurate. I'll just be very honest with you. But the discussion, I think, was that they thought going to 400 feet was too long of a distance, especially, I think, in some of our neighborhoods that are more hilly, and that they, they think that developers, since this was adopted in 2013, have been meeting this code, that they don't see any reason why we should be changing it since developers have been meeting it.
Were they unanimous in that decision?
I believe, I believe so, yes. I did throw out one other idea that if you don't like the 400 feet, and developers don't like the 200 feet, maybe we could go split the middle and say 300 feet. But I do recall that that didn't gain much traction at the Planning Commission hearing.
So in your opinion, Kelly, I know that you say you don't feel one way or the other, but what I'm hearing from you is that planning was kind of sitting around saying, well, we haven't really gotten this in front of us as a variance request very often. We haven't really seen it, so this doesn't really appear to be a problem that needs to be fixed. So let's just keep it at 200. And if there's variance requests, they can give us a variance request. Was that kind of the feel?
Kind of. I mean, I have been hearing from more developers lately that they would like us to look at that 200-foot distance and maybe make it larger. So I have been, even though Planning Commission is correct that most applicants have been meeting it, I have been hearing from more developers, and it's not just Mr. Moore or the few developers he's working with, but other developers as well, that if we can make that larger than 200 feet, that it would be a great benefit.
Carl?
Yeah, I recall, and maybe Jeremy, you can recall too, having this argument when I was on Planning Commission, and the 400 feet was much easier for us to deal with when it came to the more topographically challenged kind of country. And I think that's what I recall agreeing to a couple of variances because of that. And, you know, I recall, a lot of our ground that's, as we move larger and larger, is going to become in more involved in some of these steeper pieces of properties. And to me, it makes some sense to me to, to do what some of the developers are asking for, especially folks that are in the midst of it that are currently working on it. And I guess I'd like to support what the developers have been going, seeing that there really isn't much rationale either way, real strong arguments either way by staff. It seems to me that if we got some arguments from the developers, it seems like we might want to try it and see what goes on. I personally think that the 400 feet is not a far distance to walk. McCormick over here has got a couple of, or one space that's about that far. And I find lots of people are walking those spaces.
Mackenzie's constantly telling me to do some work around the house. That's just 400 away.
Well, what, so what I can, what I can add to that is, I agree with you, Counselor Exner, that 200 feet, 400 feet, it's all arbitrary. I mean, they're just numbers that we've created. That's why I also kidded around, but kind of was serious about the 300 feet, because it's in between. What I can let you know is that I think the further we make the distance, the more parking courts you'll see, because if they can't meet the lineal distance to available on-street parking, they'll instead have to put parking courts within the 200-foot distance. So I think it really can, rather see more parking courts sporadically placed throughout town, or you rather there be a little bit more flexibility in our code to count on-street a little farther away from the houses.
So I have to, Carl and I were, have discussed this before on, on planning, and I think some of it came back to people not being able to park close enough because they have more than one vehicle. So having that, no one uses their garage anymore, and, because it's full, it's their storage unit, or their driveways, you know, one-car driveway, having that off-site parking, and then you have someone to come and visit, and there's not enough spaces for people to visit. And so we brought this up before, that houses are tighter and tighter, and not having enough space on the street to have a car between driveways, that made it more difficult to do. So I see where the developers are coming from, but I also see the, the discussions that we had a long time ago on this, making sure that people weren't also using their driveway as a parking spot, because, you know, people think they can do that. But as the police chief will inform you, that that's not a legal place to park is in front of your driveway, that that's used for turnouts on our narrow streets. So I see that point of view, too, of making sure that there is that. Kelly, can you tell me, I'm, I'm trying to think of how far 100 feet is. How far is 100 feet, 200 feet? Can you, is there a place in Sandy that we can all say, hey, that is a 400 foot from this block to this block, just to give ourselves a perspective of the actual distance it is, and not just what we have in our minds of thinking how far that is?
Jeremy, you need to golf more.
Well, I can't afford to golf. I have three kids. You only have two kids.
33 meters of cat six cable, Jeremy.
I can only hit 100 yards in my golf, so that's how far it is.
So anyways, but yeah, can you, is there a place, so we're all on the same page of what we are interpreting what 400 feet is?
Um.
Like how long city hall is, or what's.
Yeah, it's a really good question. I don't want to give you like bad intel or bad information here. A typical, like.
You talking 400 feet?
Yeah, typical downtown block in like big cities.
If you want it, if you want to put it into perspective, if you take the track and field at the high school, and go from the outside lane to the outside lane lengthwise, you're at almost 400 feet right there.
Oh, across the football field?
Lengthwise, not across.
Length. That's pretty far.
So like they're on the high school.
So it's a little bigger than the length of a football field. It's 133 yards, it looks like. I just did the math.
Okay, so that's, that gives you a perspective, longer than the length of a football field, if you're looking for that parking spot, and you have more than one car for that house or, so just take, put that in mind. I think that was some of the thinking of the council, or not council, the commission, when it was brought up a long time ago.
Makes for a very fit neighborhood. You got to walk that part apart.
You want, do you want, you want me to square what Ray sent to me? I just remembered I could actually do that. Here's what he just said.
Kelly pulls that up. David, will you think about whether or not I'm out of order?
Yes, you are.
Because I, I worry I should have done the legislative order of conduct public hearing for this.
Oh, gosh, you're, 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 you are right, Mayor. That's okay. It's a lot less, can you hear me? Sorry, I just lost everybody's video as well.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, no, that's good. We can go ahead and answer this question, and then, and then we can, you can go ahead and read that. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I sure can't read it. It's just, even my bifocals.
Say, "Hi, Kelly. Sorry, I don't think I can make it to the next meeting. If you see this email in time, please apologize to council for me that I cannot attend the meeting. Hopefully, they have read and understood my letter. The only thing I was going to add was, by increasing the analysis, the analysis distance to 400 feet, does not mean that the only on-street parking space for a particular home will be 400 feet away. More often than not, there will be an on-street parking space within 50 to 100 from every home. Have a good night." So Ray's basically pointing out that this will be more the exception, not the rule.
Um, but then I would think it becomes subjective, and we had a whole night of subjectivity.
How about this? I think when Cascadia got put in, we really tried to make 100 feet, or 200 feet, excuse me, the rule. And I think over on the bluff, we have, I think, right, that there's more towards the 400 foot, not in the left number four or five, and the one that just got put in, but the older portion of it, there's a lot more longer road. So in terms of.
That was road length. That, yeah, that was road length requirements.
I guess I'm thinking about the amount of off-street parking you see in the Cascadia, which I find very uncomfortable for me, is you see a lot of people parking on the roads and having struggles finding places to put their cars between the different driveways. And because the roads are relatively short, and I look over in the oldest part of bluff development. And I look over in the oldest part of bluff development and I I think it's a little bit easier to find a parking space because there is more distance between roads. I think that's right. I wanted to hear somebody's alternative for that.
The size of the lots.
Um, is that too?
David? Want to hold my hand, buddy?
So go, go ahead.
Sounds like a song. Sounds like a song.
Yeah, go ahead. My apologies. Go ahead and just read the script. With legislative matters, um, you really don't need technically to read it, although it's just very helpful to do it. Uh, and then we we get the conflicts of interest issue out of the way as well. So um, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, just going ahead and doing that, my apologies.
Yep. So I'll start with the instructions for our virtual public hearing testimony, which I think we're all familiar with by now. Um, public testimony for this hearing will be called four and three groups, testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and then wait to be recognized. Um, I am opening this public hearing um for chapter uh 17.98, uh code changes, uh 19 dash oh four three DTA, never sure what I'm supposed to say there. Uh, I'm calling for abstentions uh from the hearing body. Seeing none, I'm gonna call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body. Uh, hearing none, we've done the staff, uh, the staff report. We're, while we're in the middle of the Q and A of the staff report. Okay, we're caught up. Any more questions for Kelly?
Good job. Kelly, this, this would be for both, you you have in both sections for both uh C1, uh commercial and also in residential too. Correct? That's what I read.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
This is under for your, the recommendation is for both C1 as well as uh residential for this parking.
Oh, no, no, no. The, the on-street parking, the 200-foot versus 400-foot thing, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because I read both.
That only applies to single-family homes, duplexes and um townhouses, so attached single-family homes. So that code section doesn't apply to apartments. Um, it doesn't apply to commercial or industrial. It doesn't apply to any of that. It never has since I've worked here at least.
Okay, I guess I was confused. I'm gonna see one piece of it. You, the, the code changes, there was a lot of code changes, some of it for commercial as well as some of it for residential.
Correct. Yeah, so the, the commercial code changes, I didn't get any. I don't remember, I, it would be in the exhibits, but I don't think there was any negative feedback for any of the changes. I think all the people I reached out to and the planning commission were supportive of all the changes to commercial and industrial. The only things that were questioned really were this uh residential on-street parking distance requirement.
Couple of questions. Um, one is, uh, we we have this analysis and developing the HP 2001 sometime between now and next year. Is this gonna be forestalling some of those decisions by making this decision now or because there's duplexes and so on are involved there's, how's that gonna look in terms of keeping us from making decisions later on when we analyze it into that 2001 HP process?
No, that's a great question. Um, so right now, the code, and I'm not proposing to change this, so it'd be the same as it's currently written. Is a single-family home that's attached or detached or duplex requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit of off-street parking. So that'd be the same irregardless of today's code, if you were to adopt this code or the house bill code, that would all be the same. Now, that's a good point, though, that you made is because one of the things the house bill 2001 did do is say that uh accessory dwelling units or granny flats or whatever you want to call them, our code calls them accessory dwelling units. You cannot require um off-street parking anymore. And our code requires currently one off-street parking space per dwelling unit. And so based on our code with this, these code changes will actually be in line with state statute with House Bill 2001. And that became effective uh January 1st, 2020, even though our code hasn't been updated. The, the new state statute trumps the our code essentially.
And any other question is, is this uh parking uh release really? Um, I assume it doesn't affect any of the ADA's parking and any federal required. Um, I guess ADA would be the only one I can think of off the top of my head. We still have those requirements, is that correct?
And that wouldn't be, nothing would affect that insofar as unless you're putting something in the C1 zone and you would have put a parking lot in, but now we're not requiring you to, you wouldn't necessarily have ADA parking available. But ADA parking is only required if you have parking spaces. So we wouldn't be violating the ADA code regulations. Um, we would just be similar to downtown Portland where uh or any bigger city and smaller cities around this country are doing it as well. That within the downtown area, if you do not provide a parking space, obviously you would not provide an ADA parking space. But, but as upon a clarification, that's I, you're asking some really good questions. If you did put in a parking lot and say even if your parking lot only had one parking space in the downtown, that space would have to be ADA.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so you probably won't get very many parking lots.
Probably not.
And the residential ADA is not um required.
Uh, I think it, the only time it is is when you go over a certain number of units in a multifamily dwelling development. I actually don't know the threshold on that off the top of my head, and then you had to provide um a certain number of ADA units. Um, and then also in multifamily, we do, irregardless of the number of units, we do require ADA parking uh spaces.
And Kelly's, Kelly's right, the way he described it, it, the ADA doesn't impose an obligation on the city to mandate that uh parking facilities be built. Only that if the code were to say you must build off-street parking, then the ADA kicks in. So um you're, you're free to have a code that wouldn't require off-street parking. That, that doesn't violate the ADA.
Can we get with Q and A?
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna move on um to public testimony, guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, it must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. If you are not able to submit such documentation this evening, but would like to, please let us know and we will decide whether to continue the hearing or keep the record open in this manner. Uh, as a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called four and three groups. Uh, testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I'm now uh calling for testimony for individuals in favor of the proposal. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, Mayor, we do have one. We have somebody signed in online under the username Dale. Um, Dale, you should have a button now to unmute yourself and please state your full name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Dale Holt. I'm a president of all county surveyors and planners, 39660 Pleasant Street, Sandy, Oregon. I happen to own three separate tax lots in the C1 district. And um I've read and seen the parking requirements and support your, your move 100%. I think it will add value to the downtown area over time. Um, I think you'll see new buildings, restaurants, different things that you wouldn't have seen because of um parking requirements that that you guys have recognized take up a lot of space. So I applaud you. Um, I know that I've seen other cities do this. I, I don't know how their development's going right now, but uh but it is a trend, it seems to be a trend. I've seen it in other communities, read other newspapers, seen other city councils hold the same hearing. And again, support it 100%. The developer, you know, like I own a piece of property that's vacant and um you know, if I could put more building on it, it's more revenue for me and it's more revenue for you. And, and uh using the parking on the street is a great idea. So I support that 100%. I also would like to add, um, Ray Moore works for me and we've discussed the 400 feet on the residential. So my, part of my testimony is in favor, part of it's kind of neutral, but um, the idea with the 400 feet is you heard Kelly say that the 200 feet and the 400 feet are both arbitrary numbers. But I think what you're gonna find over time is that uh the 400 feet gives you a little more flexibility, not a lot of flexibility, but it gives you maybe enough flexibility to develop 400-foot block lengths. And it, and it gives you enough flexibility that you might gain a lot here or there. I, I don't think it, it, it's not like they're, that people are asking for six or 800 feet or 1,000 feet, but they're asking for the block length. Um, typically, a good neighbor isn't gonna park in front of the neighbor's house. As, as you start to learn who your neighbors are and if, and if park is an issue, you, you tend to use the parking space over and over again that's close to your house. You, you don't find people parking 400 feet away, but you find the ability to create a subdivision that has that ability. But, and, and I think you were right in saying that people are gonna park within 50 or 100 feet of their house. Unless they just can't get to that soon enough. If somebody comes home from work a few minutes early and parks in front of your, in front of your house, you may have to park 200 feet away, but I, I would favor giving them just a little bit more flexibility. And I, and I don't think it, I don't think it's harmful in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jeff?
Mayor, I don't see any more raised hands.
Okay, uh, we'll move on um to uh calling for testimony against the proposal.
Okay, Mayor, we have uh Kathleen Walker. Uh, Ms. Walker, uh, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Bluff Road, Sandy, Oregon. Can you see me?
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Hold on. Oh, I, okay, that's fine. Right. Okay, um. Starting now.
Okay.
Why is this being considered, given the deficiency of our code around Bailey Meadows? I, I am, I cannot figure out why this is even uh something that you guys have, have had the planning staff work so much on when apparently there's these huge loopholes in your code that crying out for critical uh amendments to make it so that you know, developers pay for their fair share. So I'm just gonna start with that. But anyways, this is very much a developer-friendly proposal. Um, as Kelly quoted, and I'm quoting him, he turned it over to the developers to determine what was needed for the parking. Um, this is a dangerous direction that this, this is going. The planning director has um solicited the opinions and input of a bunch of developers. And yet, have you been on Facebook lately? Because most of the bitching and moaning, pardon my French, is about parking in the neighborhoods. People are all upset about all the neighbors parking along, you know, in front of their house. And um, you know, that's kind of the, one of the common problems that we have here. Um, for the, for the, and this is a bunch of different changes, so it's really disjointed as to how, how to even address this. Your first thing is your resident, your, your uh business stuff downtown. What you're doing is small businesses downtown can, can get knocked down into bigger businesses. But basically what you're saying is that it's okay that the developers do, do whatever they want and all, everybody's got to just park along the busy, crowded, over capacity highway and try to get their kids and their strollers and their wheelchairs out on the busy highway to go to a business downtown. That's, that's very developer-friendly, but it's not very much um business user-friendly. And I don't believe it'll really help us in the long run. Um, regarding the, evidently, this also includes residential zones, so there's some proposed um developments of one and two-bedroom units, maybe above commercial or something on Pleasant. I'm not quite sure what's proposed. Um, because this is the first I've heard of it. And again, those people, it'll be like Portland where they allow all these apartment houses with one and two-bedroom apartments and no parking is needed, is provided for all the people that, that, that live there. Um, that's, I would have never thought that Sandy would have gone in that direction like Portland. And I totally disagree with it because the parking is, you know, the, the apartments need to provide for their own parking. And then finally, I guess, you know, the idea that this 200 thing go into 400, I mean, that's more than a football field. The driveways are full, the, the parking along the road is full. If you walk down the streets, we need to keep it at 200 feet. And this needs to be continued. This hearing needs to be continued. You need to let the public know what is being proposed so that not just the developers, but actually the um actual residents who are gonna be affected by this are allowed to know about this.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate your time this evening. All right, uh, so waiting for another um um testimony against the proposal.
Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, now I am calling for neutral testimony.
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
All right, thank you very much, Jeff. Um, Kelly, I'm returning to you for a staff recap.
Yeah, I mean, the deficiencies in the development code, uh where there are deficiencies, I'll be working with the city attorney on those. Um, uh, those need to be defined still and we would include city council on that once those are defined. Um, we've been working on this parking code and the changes in it long before Bailey Meadows was even um before anybody in the public. I've been working on these parking code changes and getting input from them, from city council members, planning commissioners, for probably well over a year at this point. Um, and I don't know where Ms. Walker uh is referencing, but a lot of small cities that have been successful like Hood River, Silverton, these towns, they have adopted similar code provisions as they always pointed out. Um, so I don't, I don't really know um where she's getting this input from, that it would make it more dangerous. But what you would see, as uh Mr. Holt pointed out, is more vitality. Um, you'd see more development. And yes, I did reach out to the development, uh prospective developers and engineers and architects. I was asked by city council in the past to do that very thing. Um, when we brought the tree code provisions and other provisions before council, um, when Mr. King and some other council members were still on council, we had an outpouring and an outcry from the development community that I didn't include them enough. So because of that circumstance, that was probably about a year and a half ago, I decided to include them upfront and get their input. I did not write this code uh based on their input. I wrote this code and they gave me some input that I then uh incorporated into the code changes. Um, I think everybody would agree that we want to see development. We want to see the town be uh, you know, moving forward in that regard. And I, I think delaying these code provisions, all you're gonna be doing is hurting uh developers, hurting childcare providers, uh hurting our chances of getting more multifamily with more than two-bedroom units. Uh, delaying these code changes in, in my opinion, is not gonna do anything uh but damage relations with development, damage the ability for multifamily developers to actually develop some other than one and two-bedroom units in our town. So I, I would recommend, as planning commission recommended, proceeding with approval of these code changes. I would not extend this legislative hearing to another night.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, any questions for Kelly on the staff recap? Okay, uh, seeing now, I'm looking for a motion to uh close the public hearing. Okay, seeing now, looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
A move that we close the public hearing.
A second.
A motion from Councilor Exner and a second from Councilor Smallwood to close the public hearing. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Pollian?
Yes. All right, now I'm calling for a discussion of the hearing body. I think Kelly did a good job responding to some of the comments that were made. One thing I would add on not being friendly or business, or friendly with people who want to do shopping in business. You know, I'm kind of a marketplace-based principles guy. And if a business owner wants to open up an establishment and not offer a proper amount of parking for customers to come in, that's a pretty weak business decision. And, you know, it's not really on, I don't believe it's the city's or government's role to dictate to business owners, you know, necessarily parking requirements, especially when it stifles the ability for communities like ours. You talk about, you know, I love that this was kind of linked in to the earlier discussion that council had this evening. Because a big part of that discussion is about whether or not the city has the ability to pay for key infrastructure for city growth. And I talk to taxpayers every day in this community and a whole lot of them don't want to see taxes go up to be able to pay for some of these things. So where do we go get those funds from? Well, a lot of those funds are going to come from commercial development. And being able to create an environment in which commercial development can thrive and happen and people can work, you know, live, work, and play here. You know, we have over 60% of residents here in Sandy commute every day for work. And that's not just a hassle, that's a, that's a family values issue. When you consider people not getting home in time to help their kids with their homework or go to the after-school program, there's just a lot of steps we got to do here in this community to become a lot more friendly to getting family wage jobs. And while this isn't necessarily a direct correlation, it most certainly is. These are the kinds of steps that we as a council have talked about and the leadership that we're showing to drive this community into a place that's sustainable, not just for today, but for tomorrow, both in infrastructure and lifestyle. So those are just some of my, you know, I guess my counter to some of what we've heard here this evening. Any other discussion?
I'll just say in my work with the childcare task force, this has come up as being something we can do at the city level to be more welcoming to daycares. Parking requirements continue to be a big issue for them. So I like the proposition before us. I think that it will go far in helping us attract some of these businesses that we have, you know, that we need.
Thank you. Councilor Lee, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I concur with the proposals, but I would like to see either 300 or 400 feet changed in the proposed ordinance.
Well, hold on, counselor. It's at, I believe it's at 200 feet right now coming out of Planning Commission. So we would have to change it back. So do you want it at 200 or are you suggesting we put it at 300 to 400?
300 is good for me, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the council thinks.
I understand. I just was trying to see what direction you're going there. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I think it is stated at, I'm reading right now, 400 feet is what it was changed to on 1798-200. So it's still stating 400, the line through 200, so.
Kelly?
That's in Exhibit A, which was the code presented to Planning Commission. You would have to reference.
The ordinance.
You'd have to reference the ordinance or Exhibit J. That is the actual track changes version updated since Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Exner?
Yeah, I got, I hate to do this, but I know we've had some surveys in the past about parking and from our citizens. And although the actual inventory shows that we have a fairly good amount of parking in downtown Sandy, it was a real perception, at least at that time, that we didn't have enough. And I think what turns out is that people want to park right smack in front of the door of the retail or the business that they are going to be attending, especially if it's raining. So a lot of mothers would love to get their kids right into the store without having to walk half a block to get them into that store. So there's a little bit of a conflict there in terms of perception versus reality or maybe desire and that kind of thing. But really, I hear an awful lot, also hear a lot of comments from developers, property owners, a little frustration about being limited about what they can put into a building and have to have those parking spaces built up into a place where they can't do the work. They can't put a building there because they don't have enough space to park off-street. So I'm inclined to let's try this one and see what we get. Don't believe it's going to be giving carte blanche to the developers and owners of the buildings and such. I think it will be self-regulating a lot because I'm not seeing a person going to be putting a building in that will not be able to receive clients to show up. I mean, they're just pretty, I think you mentioned, you know, weak. I think that's pretty close to the word there. So I think I'd be very in favor of keeping it going that way. In terms of the 200 versus 400 versus 300, we've been trying 200, let's try something a little bit longer. I'm okay with three or four.
Jeremy?
So I think there's two things here. There's the residential side of it and then there's the commercial side for me as I see it. For the commercial side of it, it's something I've been asking for for a long time. I don't know how many years. We go around to other cities and see what they've done. We have so many small lots that cannot be built on because there's so many other restrictions. And I have asked and past councils have asked of the planning department, development code to be changed so that we can be less restrictive on that. And it's not just parking, it was also on stormwater. It was also on some of these green spaces with inside this that I would always reference back to Portland doesn't have to do that. Or, you know, because there is no place for them to build a storm retention pond on such a small lot. You would have to get several lots put together. And on top of that, parking lots on top of that with that requirement, then you become down to an unusable piece of land on some of these small lots. We're talking about the C-1 area, which is very tight, very small. And I think it is, as everyone else has said, it's businesses that are going in that area are not ones that would have huge footprints that could accommodate, you know, hundreds of people, obviously. And a business wouldn't do that on their own regardless. So I think it's in some ways self-monitoring as far, and then looking at designated areas in town that could accommodate parking in a better place and letting them walk. So I think that is something that our city, I've been asking for and I know a lot of other counselors have. So I appreciate, and it's nothing new at all. And I appreciate Kelly's hard work in bringing this forward in that. The residential side of things, I I'm a little bit leery on the 400 feet. Maybe it's my understanding of how great that could be in the fact of, maybe it's just my history of being on the Planning Commission of understanding enough parking within that site, 400 feet for everyone that would be parking on the streets. As we know, people have more than one car and then when people visit. And so we aren't as tight-knit as maybe some other communities like Portland where people don't have cars and that type of thing. I think we all do. Families have more than one, sometimes more than two. So I think the 400 feet, especially given in the perspective of what we did with the football field and the length of past the football field, gives it a good perspective of that. And I would say, I don't feel comfortable necessarily going to the 400 foot. You know, 200 foot, I think is wise, 300 foot, I could, I could get behind. But I'm not quite sure I'm there on the 400 foot. But definitely in the commercial side of things, I would say that I am for what is written there. And I think it will help our community and have economic development and people getting businesses that they want in our C-1 area that they've been asking for, that no business would because of the requirements, it's such a small space.
All right, well, I'm hearing broad support to accept it and to do it at 300 feet. I've heard that now from Councilor Lee, kind of pointed to from Councilor Exner and now from Councilor Petezel. I feel that's a pretty strong place to be. I'm seeing nods. All right, well, we can start to look for, go with someone about.
I was gonna say, what does John have to say? I can't see. Oh, now his face is moving. And did Lori, I don't know if we talked to Lori.
No, she's good. I'm watching, I'm watching people. I got you all on my screen here. David, you look like you're wanting to say something.
Yeah, just one thing that, since you're going to be making an amendment, the first thing I would ask for, Mayor, is to entertain, if there's no more discussion, a motion to amend. I'm trying to get the ordinance back up here. Where'd it go? Whatever the number of the ordinance is.
It's 2020-06.
Great, to change that reference from 200 feet to 300 feet. That's all the motion needs to be.
I would so move that we amend 2020-06 to include the 300-foot area.
Okay.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yeah.
And that is in the residential zones, not the commercial?
Residential.
Still a second.
A motion by Councilor Lee, steal a second by Councilor Hamblin. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yeah.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yo, baby.
Take that as a yes. Councilor Schultz?
I'm getting tired.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes. And before I move to the next, I just want to say, very public process, to Kelly's point, been going on for over a year. Went through Planning Commission, had public notices for the Planning Commission. I've read two articles in the Sandy Post on this issue. We had public notices for this meeting, which was a public meeting in which we opened up for public testimony. And then we voted. So just because one resident of our community maybe didn't hear about it tonight, I don't think we have to notify that one individual every time that we're going to move forward as a council. Item 10.3, yes.
One more thing, Mayor. So you amended, you amended the ordinance and now you got to go and do the first and second reading to actually adopt it.
Okay, Jeff, we'll go for the first reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17.98 Parking, Loading, and Access Requirements of the Sandy Municipal Code?
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Start it.
There's a motion by Councilor Hamblin, a second by Councilor Exner to approve the first reading. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes.
I'd like to call for a second reading. By title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17.98 Parking, Loading, and Access Requirements of the Sandy Municipal Code?
I make a motion that we approve the second reading.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Petezel, a second by Councilor Hamblin to accept the second reading. Jeff, roll call vote.
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to our next item.
Effective for 30 days. I just wanted to let you know, for anybody listening.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Sandy Police Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Jordan?
Tyler's still, Tyler's still on, all right. All right, you ready?
I am.
We're happy to bring this one to you guys, so it should be quick, too.
Yeah, so it's been a long, a long process since we initially started labor negotiations with the Sandy Police Association. But this is the final piece to finish up their contract. So council may recall that in November 2019, we brought before you memorandum of under, memorandum of agreement for all of the articles of the police contract with the exception of insurance that we're still working out. Most recently in January, staff met with council in executive session to discuss the insurance article that was remaining and presented to you the option of covering the employee-only portion of insurance at 100%, an 85, 15% split for any coverage above employee-only, and then adding the option of a retirement contribution match up to $115 per month. That, sorry, I've lost my train of thought. That went before the police union at the end of March. The union ratified that contract piece. And so now it's before you for the final step to get approval. There's been no changes since the last time staff met with you to discuss what was on the table. So unless there are any other questions about where we're at or what needs to happen, that concludes my staff report.
That's great. Any questions or do we want to make a motion to adopt the agreement?
Make a motion to adopt the agreement.
Again.
Presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Hamblin, a second by Councilor Exner. All those, well, I can't do that. Jeff, will you please call the roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes. Moving on, 3888, I think, sorry, thank you, Tyler. Congratulations, by the way, everybody.
Great work on that, guys.
Great work, great work. Moving on to 3888 Pioneer Boulevard, the Hold Harmless Agreement Withdrawal.
Yeah, and just quick, I wanted to say, like you did, thank you to Tyler and Angie and also Lieutenant Lundry and Chief. That was a long negotiation. And, you know, thank you to the officers too for, you know, going through it and happy to have that ratified. So this is another quick item. This, so this was a couple of weeks ago, we brought to you a Hold Harmless Agreement, get your authorization in order to use Strauss Avenue as a loading zone. And that was an arrangement that we were working with the proposed tenant for that building on that loading zone. As the council has seen through communications, the property owner is not willing to sign that Hold Harmless Agreement at this time. So we're recommending the council withdraw the approval of the agreement. And, you know, in the staff report, I do mention that we're happily working with the proposed tenant on, you know, her plans and other solutions. But at this time, it seems like there's some other issues that need to be worked out. And we can't no longer recommend having this Hold Harmless Agreement. And furthermore, we're looking at, you know, our urban renewal grant and how the requirements for using that building were sort of centered on how we can make that loading zone work, given that that's a pretty crucial part of that business. And so there are some issues that need to be worked out between that property owner and the tenant and the code requirements for that facility. So we'll kind of wait for information. And again, we're happy to continue to work with that tenant on their expansion plans. But again, this item tonight is just pertains to the council removing your authorization for that Hold Harmless Agreement.
If there's no questions, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize the withdrawal. I make a motion that we authorize the withdrawal to be executed, sorry, withdrawal authorization to execute the whole harmless agreement for the use of Strauss Avenue as a loading zone for the purpose proposed tenant of 3888 Pioneer Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Petezel, a second by Counselor Schultz. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Petezel?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Polian?
Yes. All right, Jordan, you're still up. Moving on to the.
I'll spare you tonight. I just want to say thank you to, I want to say thank you to Jeff for playing operator and handling this meeting tonight. Logistics, figuring out the Zoom meeting, how that works, and, you know, managing the, you know, the call-ins and the Zoom participants. I think it went very well, and I applaud the council for going through this. And again, it's a good test of what we're capable of doing in these circumstances. And thank you to the mayor. You know, there was a pre-meeting about how to do the logistics for this, and it is a little tricky with having, you know, quasi judicial public hearing and how that works. And I think you guys executed very well. So congratulations. That was a tough meeting.
David, Jeff, we did it!
That's, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Schultz?
No report tonight.
Great. I'm trying, I'm going around the robe in my head. Counselor Exner?
I'm going to hold it up tonight. This is getting late, so I'm no report.
All right, Counselor Lee?
I just have one thing. We were supportive of the Ad hoc Committee for Resiliency Plan. Emily in Kelly's department came up with an opportunity to look at a grant to take it further to the community expansion of that plan at some point. This grant would allow that after six months from now. And they're going to go ahead and process the application so we have the opportunity. If we're one of the six selected, we can talk about how we want to move forward with that. Kelly, you have anything to add?
No, it's just that the grant application is due April 8th.
Right.
We were just notified of it last week, so it's not like we had a lot of turnaround time. We were lucky that there was a council meeting tonight, so we get your input to decide if we want to apply for that or not by the 8th.
Apply.
Yeah, I say apply, because the only question is I had, Counselor Lee, was just trying to learn more about the organization we'd be partnering with to do this. But I don't see why not just apply for it. And I mean, we have plenty of time to to do additional vetting, which I'm sure is going to turn out to be more than adequate and fine, so.
I'll send you the link to the company and the guidebook that they're using, so you can take a look at that. Rest of the council.
Yeah, thank you. Good, let's apply. I have seen nods, unless I see someone that gets really upset. Yeah, all right. And is that all, counselor? Yeah, okay, so Counselor Hamblin?
I was under report.
All right, Counselor Smallwood?
No report. I would like to mention, though, that Counselor Lee, Exner, and Petezel seem to be sitting in front of their libraries tonight. So I was just trying to figure out if you guys are trying to be astute.
No books for me.
Well, I have to say, that's my wife's, but.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Really short report for me. I just again. Oh, oh my gosh, how could I forget you, Jerry?
We almost made it.
All right, now let's turn it over for our monthly advertisement from our sponsor, Sandy Matt.
All right, well, hey, it's doing great, and thank you, Greg, for that. We are leading the state in great internet. Anyway, we all know that, so I'll leave that alone. But I do want to say a big shout out to Sarah in the parks for the competition that we participated in and got a lot of great participation and participation with the school district and others. So a lot of hard work that she, she put into that, so.
Great, thank you. Real short report for me. I'll just piggyback on that real quick. Lot of votes for that. Just want to thank all the local businesses and nonprofit organizations. And you mentioned the school district, Jeremy, that kicked in during that process. It was a great community effort. We got a lot of support, and a little derailed with a little virus going around. But it was a great effort. Solid meeting tonight. I wanted again, thank Jeff, and staff, and Jordan, and David, and everybody. It really helped make tonight happen. Busy night for Kelly as well. So thank you, everybody, for your work this evening. We sworn two officers tonight. Huge thing for council that we did this year off that public safety fee. And we put public safety as a priority, and that really came to fruition tonight, which is incredibly exciting. And then additionally, you know, with the parking standards, I've already talked to that, but I'm really proud of that. You know, we're going on with COVID-19, or I think week three, with the governor's stay-at-home order. We're heading to nicer weather days. So as I mentioned, it's chief, you know, let's just, let's keep the social distancing practices and everything in place. And remember the shop local. I had someone tell me the other day of an idea where they're doing these meetings like we are tonight, and they're doing some lunch meetings and happy hours and all that. So if you're participating in that, you're doing a lunch meeting, maybe suggest that you both, you know, order something local to eat at your, you know, for lunch. If you're doing one of these Zoom happy hours, call Boring Brewing and, and get a growler of beer delivered to your house. Just let's not forget about our local small business owners. This is only week three of what's going to be, as talked about tonight, a multi-month deal. So we've got to just keep vigilant and try and help out our community. So with that, it's 10:20. I'll let everybody go. Thank you again for your efforts tonight and always. So thanks, everybody. With that, I'll adjourn this meeting.
Have a good night.
Night, everybody.